Back. Somebody needs to make a motion. Allow city manager to begin negotiations with PPA.
I make the motion for the city man- authorizing the city manager to carry on labor negotiations.
A second.
Made, uh, motion by Council Hassan and seconded by Duggar. Okay, um. So now we are resuming the regular meeting of the Beaverton City Council following an executive session. We will, we will continue tonight's agenda starting with visitor comments. We will then move to the city manager's report consent agenda.
Council President, Council President, may I interrupt? Uh, we do need to take the vote. There's gonna, a motion and a second. We just need a vote.
Okay. All right, let's see, um, recorder, please call the roll for the vote.
Um, this is for the motion by, uh, Councilor Hassan, seconded by Councilor Duggar, to, uh, authorize the city manager to carry out negotiations. Councilor Duggar?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilor Hartmeier Prigg?
Yes.
Councilor Hassan?
Yes.
Councilor Kimmy?
Yes.
Councilor Teeter?
Yes.
Councilor Tivnan?
Yes.
And Mayor Beatty is absent. Motion carries.
Yeah, let's continue. Um, regarding visitor comments, the city requires pre-registration for online and in-person visitor comments at the council meetings. Registration closed at twelve noon today. All registration was conducted through city recorder's office via email or phone in preparation for this meeting. Do you have anybody registered to speak?
Uh, there are no visitor comments this evening.
Okay, um, so let's move on to the next agenda item. Um, it's the city manager's report. City manager, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Um, can we have the slides? Um, Council, I just have five, uh, brief announcements for you this evening. Uh, the first, if we can move to the next slide, is just a reminder to the community that, of course, that winter, um, lights is happening now at City Park, at southwest Fifth Street and southwest Hall Boulevard in downtown Beaverton. Uh, Candy Cane Lane will be lit up between four PM and eight PM every night through Friday, January third. Um, our next slide is some really exciting news. Uh, we have a new and redesigned Your City that's headed your way into the community. Uh, we are moving to quarterly issues, but we have a more visual magazine-style publication, uh, that's full focus on council priorities and projects. It's a one-stop resource, uh, we hope for community members that'll have a focus on seasonal news as well as, uh, city services. And to complement, um, that change, we are also adding a new e-newsletter that will launch in January alongside with the new look of, uh, Your City. And it'll be a great digital tool, uh, for timely information. So stay tuned for subscription information that's coming your way. Next slide. If you are on your way to City Hall, there are some changes, um, particularly to Milliken Way, uh, parking garage, which is a privately-owned garage that's adjacent to City Hall. Um, you'll need now to take a parking ticket and hold on to that and get that validated. And when you come to City Hall for any kind of business or a meeting, you can get your ticket validated throughout the building, um, at a variety of counters, uh, for all guests that have business at City Hall. Next slide. And of course, uh, the community is aware that we have opened our first year-round shelter for adults experiencing homelessness. So it is officially now complete and operational. Uh, it does hold sixty guests, beds, uh, provides meals and showers twenty-four hours, seven days a week. Uh, and housing navigation, as you know, and supportive services will be provided. However, uh, if you know someone that is in need of support, we really want you to encourage them to, uh, call Community Connect. And the number is listed on the screen, five zero three six four zero thirty-two sixty-three. And that's a coordinated entry system that will connect people with services, support, and housing resources. And then finally, the last slide is that, uh, Beaverton Police definitely want to make sure that your, uh, gifts are safe this holiday season. We've had an uptick in some, um, theft with respect to, um, packages that land on your porch. So a couple of tips is that if you are shipping packages, please add package insurance or ship to them to a store, or consider a package-receiving service instead. And for those that are receiving packages, please work with your neighbors, uh, to keep an eye out for those, or we encourage you to use home security cameras as well. But if you do have a package that is stolen, please call the non-emergency dispatch line that again is on the screen, but I'll read it. It's, uh, five zero three six two nine zero one one one. Thank you.
Do any councilors have questions to city manager? No? Okay, we, we'll move forward to the next item. Uh, we're now moving to consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Just moved by the Councilor Teeter and seconded by Councilor Duggar. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Council President, I just have a quick question on the, um, Agenda Bill two four one five nine. Um, the language is included at the top. I think it was language that we had agreed upon. I'm just gonna pull it up. Supporting, protecting the civil, gender, and reproductive rights of immigrants, refugee, LGBTQ plus, and historically excluded communities. I just didn't see it in the actual framework below. Was that just an, an oversight? I wanted to double check.
Anyone ask if Jocelyn Blake is online and she could clarify that for you? Uh, that is our government relations manager. If not, um, Councilor Hassan, we will go ahead and make a note of what you just said and make sure that that's reflected for the record.
Okay, any other questions? No? Okay, uh, city recorder, please take the votes by roll call.
Councilor Tivnan?
Yes.
Councilor Teeter?
Yes.
Council President Kimmy?
Yes.
Councilor Hassan?
Yes.
Councilor Hartmeier Prigg?
Yes.
Councilor Duggar?
Yes.
And Mayor Beatty is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we'll, we'll now move on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting. This is the time and place for a public hearing on, uh, the appeals of the Planning Commission's approval of LU three two zero two three dash zero zero five five seven, Ash Creek Play School, DR one two zero two four dash zero one zero six one. I now call to order the public hearing. Before we move to the substance of the hearing, I will ask the city attorney to cover some preliminary matters.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President and city councilors. I am Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney, with a brief pre-hearing statement. This hearing concerns three separate appeals of the Planning Commission's decision to approve a design review compliance letter to allow for a playground expansion at the Murray Hills Christian Church. The applicant is Ash Creek Play School, and the Planning Commission's decision was appealed by Ronald Sattler, David Golda, and Douglas Gordon. The three appeals have been consolidated into this one hearing. I will now explain the criteria that council must use to make the, its decision tonight, and then I will ask members of the council if they wish to make any disclosures. The applicant has the burden of proving that the application is consistent with the Beaverton Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. The criteria that must be addressed in this hearing are BDC, that's Beaverton Development Code, forty point twenty point fifteen point one point C, Design Review Compliance Letter. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward these approval criteria or other criteria in the Development Code or Comprehensive Plan that the speaker believes applies to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. Section fifty point eighty-five of the Development Code requires council to be impartial and that council members may not have any bias or personal or business interest in the outcome of the application. To these ends, the following questions will now be asked. First, do any council members, uh, wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest? Okay, let the record show no response. Do any members of the council have an ex parte contact to declare? Councilor, uh, Hartmeier Prigg?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, um, disclose that back in July, um, Ash Creek did reach out to me to request a meeting, and I declined any sort of meeting because we knew there was a Planning Commission, um, matter at the time. So I just wanted to share that they had reached out to me and I responded that I could not communicate. Um, but that's the extent of the communication.
Okay, and you didn't learn anything that would affect your ability to, uh, make a fair and impartial, uh, decision on the application?
Correct.
Okay.
And I have the same comment and answer as also Hartmeier Prigg.
Okay. Does any other council member have, uh, any other ex parte disclosure, disclosures? Okay. Moving on, uh, does any counselor wish to declare any site visits? Okay, let the record show no response. Uh, does any member of the public, of the audience, wish to challenge the ability of the council to consider this matter or to challenge the ability of any council member to participate in the decision? City Recorder, do we have anybody who is wishing to speak?
We do. Um, I'm not sure what order you would like us to go by.
This is regard, in regards to challenging, uh, a council member's ability to participate.
I apologize, then no.
Okay, thank you. Let the record show no, no response. I will now go over the procedure for this hearing. Uh, city staff will start the, uh, with a presentation of the staff report. The applicant will go next with a presentation that will be limited to ten minutes. Each appellant will then have an opportunity to present, and each presentation will be limited to ten minutes. A recognized neighborhood, uh, NAC, Neighborhood Association Committee, homeowners association, government agency, or organized group recognized by council will have up to five minutes to speak. Council will then take testimony from persons who wish to speak in the following order, and it will, each, uh, testimony will be limited to three minutes each. First, uh, council will hear from those are, who are in support of the appeal, then from those who are opposed, and finally, from those who are neither in support nor opposed. After the members of the public have testified, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. Rebuttal testimony shall be limited to the testimony and evidence in the record. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. If you've joined the meeting online, you can click the raise hand feature to let the city recorder know you wish to speak. When you speak, please give your first and last name and mailing address for the record. Residing Officer, Council President, that concludes the, uh, preliminary legal matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, uh, proceed to the staff presentation.
Good evening, uh, good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Anas Latinsky. I'm the Planning Division Manager in the Community Development Department at the City of Beaverton. Um, this hearing tonight is a first of two related appeals. Uh, this one is addressing the expansion of a playground and other site work, and the other appeal hearing, um, addresses the proposed expansion of a preschool in the Murray Hill neighborhood. Before Mr. Regner gets on with the presentation for that first appeal, I'm going to provide a brief overview of your role in the land use appeal process, since it's been a while since council has heard an appeal. State law, as well as Beaverton's own code, provide a structured process for decision-making on land use applications. There are four types of land use applications with different procedures and different decision-makers in Beaverton. But in all cases, a land use application must be decided based on the approval criteria in Beaverton Code. For these applications that are being appealed, the Planning Commission decisions were based on the approval criteria. In your view of the appeals, you are also tasked with making a decision based on the approval criteria. Altogether, you've been given a lot of information, uh, from the original applications, information submitted by those appealing Planning Commission decisions, and testimony you provided, and some of it has come to you only today. So it's a lot. Um, both appeal hearings are de novo, which means that the applicant bears the burden of proof, and you have the ability to weigh the credibility of all the evidence in the record, including evidence that was presented to the Planning Commission originally. Fundamentally, your task tonight is to determine whether, based on all of the evidence in the record, the land use applications meet the approval criteria. The staff presentations tonight will aim to focus on what staff believes to be the most prominent and substantive topics for you to consider. However, we are ready to provide additional information based on your questions during the hearing. Um, a couple of just very basic, um, elements of the appeals tonight. There are two related land use applications, uh, that were requested. A type-one design review compliance letter for a playground, playground expansion, site grading, and fence at the Murray Hills Christian Church. This is the first hearing that we're starting now. Uh, and then a type-three modification of a conditional use application to increase the number of students that can attend Ash Creek Preschool. Planning Commission approved the design review application and denied the conditional use application. Both of these decisions have been appealed. The design review approval was appealed by parties that oppose the project, and the conditional use denial was appealed by the applicant's Ash Creek Preschool. Council could agree with both of the Planning Commission decisions, disagree with both of the decisions, or agree with one decision and not the other. Um, and I will now hand it over to Steve, who will go over, um, a more detailed presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Latinsky. Uh, my name is Steve Regner, Senior Planner with the City of Beaverton. Uh, and our first hearing, um, as explained just now, making sure my screen chair is up and running. There we go. Um, first application or, uh, appeal for the council tonight is APP two zero two four zero one zero four eight, the Ash Creek Play School Design Review Appeal. And as Ms. Latinsky noticed, there are three individual appeals, um, that the city received regarding Planning Commission's decision. Um, a bit of project history, um, this is a little bit of repeat, but it's kind of a complicated situation, so it's worth repeating. Um, the project was initiated with the request, uh, to the increase the enrollment of an existing childcare facility at Murray Hills Christian Church, and to retroactively approve a play area expansion at the church. There were two applications submitted. The first was the major modification of a conditional use, uh, which, um, is a mechanism to increase enrollment of the childcare facility. And the second application is the design review compliance letter, uh, for the retroactive approval of the play area expansion. Uh, Planning Commission met on October ninth and October twenty-third, and rendered decisions on the applications on the twenty-third. Uh, the childcare enrollment increase was denied, and the play area expansion was approved, and both decisions were appealed. Uh, this hearing is for the play area expansion, and we have received three individual appeals, uh, regarding Planning Commission's decision. I'll start off by noting that there are, uh, both procedural and material decisions that staff will ask council, uh, to decide upon tonight. First little bit of background, uh, the site is located at one five zero five zero southwest Weir Road, Murray Hills Christian Church. Uh, the entire site size is just under four acres. It's in the neighbor's southwest neighborhood, and the site itself is zone residential mixed B, as is, uh, the surrounding environments. Before I get to the material considerations, we'll talk procedural issues first. Um, as Ms. Latinsky noted, um, the design review compliance letter application for the approval of the playground expansion is what's called a type-one application. Type-one applications are identified to be used for smaller, less complex, narrower in scope projects. Um, BDC, Beaverton Development Code fifty fifteen one A, talks about non-discretionary criteria or criteria that only requires professional judgment of technical issues. Um, that is a staff-level decision. There is no public noticing with a type-one. And Beaverton Development Code fifty sixty-one identifies that the appeal of a type-one decision is limited to the applicant. What happened in this situation, consistent with Beaverton Development Code, is that it was bundled with a conditional use permit, which is a type-three application. Type-three applications have, uh, have noticing and have, uh, Planning Commission as the decision-maker as opposed to staff. Um, when there are two applications bundled with different, uh, types, all of the applications are elevated to the highest type. So a type-one and a type-three go through the type-three process for noticing who is the decision-maker. Um, and that is what happened here. Um, however, it is staff's opinion, um, that just because the design review compliance letter was elevated to a type-three for the decision-making process does not extend the ability to appeal to persons beyond the applicant, consistent with BDC fifty sixty point one. Um, to be clear, um, city staff are asserting that an error in procedure was made by city staff, and that the appeals should not have been accepted, uh, per BDC fifty sixty-one. Um, as such, the three appeals staff is recommending should be denied on those procedural grounds, consistent with fifty sixty point one. This is one of the two decisions, uh, staff is asking council to weigh in and evaluate on tonight. Um, before I move on to the material considerations, I would invite Assistant City Attorney Robin McIntyre, um, to provide any other context or any other additional information, uh, they think is appropriate to, uh, discuss this issue.
Uh, thank you, Steve. You, you covered that, uh, very, it's very detailed. I will just, um, add that, uh, I, I think the question, the question that staff is asking council to decide is whether, by virtue of consolidating the applications, is the intent of the code to elevate the type-one application to a type-three application? Or is the intent of the code to run the type-one application to a, through a type-three process? Meaning, it would be appeal to city council and follow the hearing procedures in, um, in that section of the code for type-three appeals, not necessarily to elevate it to a type-three application, which is appealable by, uh, more than just the applicant. So that is a question before you that we would like you to decide in addition to the approval criteria, uh, addition to whether the applicant has met the approval criteria. So unless you have any questions of me, I will let Steve, uh, continue, uh, with the presentation.
I do think there's one question.
Yeah, Robin, can, um, can you state the second question? So I caught the question of, was it the intention of the code to elevate a type-one to a type-three when it's consolidated? I, the second question I need you to state for us again.
Sure, or, or is it the intent to, uh, because it's been consolidated, to, to run the type-three, the, the type-one appeal to the, through the type-three process, which means it's appealable to city council, and it's subject to the hearing procedures in the, um, section of the code that, um, that governs type-three appeals? So it's not so much to change the nature of the application from a type-one to a type-three, but rather the process in which the appeal is heard.
Okay, and.
Two issues.
Okay, and so then I don't know if, uh, Steve, I, I know this was just part of what you described, but this very, feels very technical, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding. The, uh, there's a current, um, interpretation by staff that's saying, if you don't have an answer to those questions, staff's, or maybe staff's interpretation is that this type-one should have remained a type-one even for the appeals, and thus, the appeals should not have been allowed because they did not come from the applicant, who is the only allowable appealer under a type-one?
Correct. That, that, yes, that is staff's interpretation, yes.
Okay, and so because of that, we, council needs to answer this intent question for you tonight as well.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Teeter?
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Robin. Uh, Steve, could you give a little bit of context just for Planning Commission, uh, review processes for, for some of my council colleagues here? Um, when I was on Planning Commission, I remember we'd get large packets with, uh, design review, um, pieces to, to review, uh, tree plan two to review, uh, design review one, um, something, something else type-three, like, all of these pieces are all consolidated together. Can you give a little context there just to give some insight and, uh, some Planning Commission review and standard process for how they review all of it altogether?
Sure. So, uh, Councilor Teeter, you're right, that it's very common for there to be a, um, a bundling of applications um, with varied, um, application types. Type ones, twos, and threes are often combined all into one. And as I mentioned before, the highest application type is what governs the process that goes through for noticing and who the decision-maker is. Um, Planning Commission will, um, get all the applicant materials and staff's analysis, which is in the record for city council to review. Um, and each application has a different set of approval criteria to respond to. So, um, in this example, there is a set of approval criteria, um, for the, um, expansion of the, um, of the childcare enrollment, um, which is going to be talked about at the second hearing, uh, tonight. Uh, and then there was a set of approval criteria and findings for whether or not the play area expansion met the applicable approval criteria, um, for, for the design review compliance letter. Um, following deliberations, uh, Planning Commission will vote individually in each of those land use applications. Now, as I mentioned before, uh, they deny the conditional use and approved the design review compliance letter, which was subsequently appealed by the three, uh, members of the public.
Okay, Steve.
Okay, um, it seems like no one's, uh, raised their hand. Let's continue with staff's presentation.
All right, thank you. We will move on to the material considerations. So a little bit of context. Here is the site layout, um, of Murray Hills Christian Church. We have Weir Road to the north, southwest one fifty-first place to the northwest. That's the main vehicle entrance access point to the site. Uh, the area in red, um, is the church itself. In the area in green is the play area, um, in its current configuration. Little bit of site history. The church was approved through conditional use and design review in nineteen eighty-eight. Um, the childcare facility was originally approved in nineteen ninety-four and was established at that point. Um, in the year two thousand, there was a request to expand the church to its current size configuration. Um, I'll clarify, there was no proposal to the, uh, player to, uh, modify the play area that was in place at the time. The plans in two thousand showed a play area with some swing sets, um, and there was no proposal to modify them through, uh, through that application. In or around two thousand eleven, uh, the play area was expanded without permits. Um, these things do happen from time to time, sometimes in honest mistake, sometimes with malicious intent. But frankly, that part's kind of irrelevant, because if we do find that, whether it's a building permit or a land use application, um, that's something that's done without permits, um, the city does a very common practice of retroactively reviewing and issuing permits if the application can show that it meets the applicable approval criteria. Um, so that is what the applicant did. They applied for design review compliance letter to, um, to approve retroactively the play area, and that design review compliance letter was approved by Planning Commission on the twenty-third of October, as Planning Commission made findings that it met the applicable approval criteria. Um, there are four main assertions made by the appellants. I'm gonna touch on each one of them. Um, sometimes they do get a little bit complicated, so, um, at the end, if you have questions, please do not hesitate to ask any clarifying questions. Um, the first assertion made, um, has to do with whether there were proper signatures, proper signature, signatory authority, and proper application form submitted. Um, this kind of is a genesis of our shift from our older, uh, permitting system This kind of is a genesis of our shift from our older permitting system to our new electronic permitting system that came through in twenty twenty three. Staff developed kind of new best practices for what it means to get proper signatures, proper forms, things like that. And in some cases, our code necessarily hasn't caught up with that. So there were some assertions made that the right forms weren't provided. Staff disagrees with that because of our new best practices with our electronic permitting system. However, just to eliminate any confusion, the applicant has provided an application form for designer view compliance letter with proper signatures and proper signing authority, that's exhibit APP two point one in staff's November twenty sixth memo. The the furnishing of the signed application resolves any concerns raised on this topic. The second assertion is whether or not the designer view compliance letter was the proper application. The focus of the assertions were mainly on threshold Beaverton Development Code forty twenty fifteen one A one M. And to clarify, when there is a land use application, let me say that again. Each land use application has different thresholds that identify when the application needs to be applied for. For the designer view compliance letter, there is a pretty long list of little things that you can change on a site that would trigger designer view compliance letter, adding a door or a window, changing landscaping or constructing small buildings like threshold M. To be clear, it talks about construction or modification of a of a structure that's not a building, that has a footprint under thousand square feet and is a use permitted within the underlying zone. The appellant actually correctly identifies a loophole that existed in our code at the time. You'll notice that it talks about permitted uses, but not conditionally permitted uses. In our development code, we have permitted, we have prohibited, and then we have conditionally permitted uses. This threshold does not identify that a conditional permit or conditionally permitted use needs a designer view compliance letter application if they want to put up one of these small structures. I will note that staff has caught this loophole and has already fixed it. Our development code now identifies that a designer view compliance letter is needed if a conditionally permitted use wants to put up a small, non-building permanent structure. But the basic fact here is that it is a application is only required if it meets the threshold. And since this was a conditionally permitted use, forty twenty fifteen one A one M actually wasn't triggered. So in staff's findings, we've actually, staff's member, we've retracted those findings, noted that this threshold actually isn't applicable here. But there are two other thresholds in designer view compliance that were triggered, one for addition of fencing and one for grading on the site. Those are clearly happening or did happen on the site. And findings regarding compliance with the applicable design regulations for those two items is provided in staff's October second twenty twenty four memo. The third of four assertions I'll cover tonight talks about whether or not existing conditional use permits allow play area expansion. The appellant's assert that the nineteen ninety four and two thousand conditional use permits do not explicitly say that the play area can be expanded and therefore they cannot do it. That is a misrepresentation of how our land use process works. If a property owner or an applicant wishes to modify their site, like expand a play area, there are land use applications you go through. You do not need previous approval through a past land use application to apply and receive approval for a future modification. And in review and the conditions of approval for those previous applications, there is no specific reference to limiting the play area. Therefore, the design view compliance letter, as applied for by the applicant and approved by planning commission, was appropriate and not limited by prior approvals. My fourth and final assertion I will address is the assertion that the play area needs a separate conditional use permit. To be clear, the site already has a conditional use permit for the church and the childcare facility, as those are identified as conditional uses in the development code. A public playground is also a conditional use in the development code. We do not define in our development code, public playground, and we actually don't define public either. But in our definitions, the word public is used repeatedly in conjunction with another term, and it always denotes something, a building, a property, an operation that is owned or operated by a public entity, city Beaverton, THPRD, Washington County, all of those could be public uses. Murray Hills Christian Church, while a nonprofit, is a private entity and therefore is not public property. Just because a private use allows the public to use the facility does not make it public, similar to a grocery store allowing people in from the public to shop there, does not make it a public building. Furthermore, the development code speaks to what happens when there is a, we'll call it a supporting use on the site. Our code refers to them as accessory uses, they are structures or uses incidental and subordinate, and they those are allowed as accessory uses. Staff interprets that this play area to be incidental and subordinate to the church, therefore it is an accessory use under Beaverton Development Code sixty fifty oh five dot one. As such, staff's interpretation is that the development code regards Murray Hills Christian Church play area as an allowed accessory use and not a public park or playground, and therefore no conditionally use permit is required. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff recommends that the city council deny the three appeals before you tonight, affirming planning commission's decision to approve Ash Creek Play School Design Review Compliance Letter, DR one twenty twenty four zero 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 nine zero. And as a reminder, staff recommends council decide on two issues tonight. First, the procedural issue about whether the appellant's have proper standing to appeal. And second, whether the application complies with the applicable approval criteria as outlined in the October second staff report, as well as planning commission's findings and approval. That concludes staff's presentation and we're prepared to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the staff? Counselor Hartmyer break?
Yes, thank you. In terms of answering question number one of the appellant's standing to appeal, we, from a procedural perspective, Robin, do we need to, we just, we need to follow the script, go through all the things, and this is an outcome of the conversation? Like, we can't, like, the appeal question first and then?
I recommend you you go through the whole hearing, give the appellant's an opportunity to make their arguments and have open up, open it up to public testimony, and then you can make the decision at the end. But we do, we do, staff would like you to decide on both issues at the end, once you've heard all the public testimony.
Thank you.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yeah, this is in relation to that first question regarding the standing to appeal. So I'm, I'm, I'm to reread this stuff a couple of times to wrap my head around it, but from what you had said to, I think it was Counselor Tivnan's question about, has this been done before, that it's not uncommon for the planning commission to bundle applications for one applicant's to streamline the process? Is that, is that the rationale for bundling them?
That is a general intent, that's correct.
Okay, and has there ever been a precedent set for a type three to be challenged because it was run through a type one process?
Actually, Honest Latinsky, playing division manager, I'm just going to chime in here. The code actually is more specific about the bundling and it it specifically directs applications that are processed concurrently to follow the process that allows for the greatest amount of notice and engagement from the community. So there would never be the case that a type three would follow a type one process. It's always the, 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 the less, the less intensive processes stepping up to follow a more lengthy process. So what we see is a type one might be bundled with a type two at the type two process, or a type one and type two would be bundled with a type three and followed that type three process. So basically, whatever allows for the greatest kind of notice and engagement is what is what the process that you end up with. I would also just let the council know that if a type one application, such as a design review compliance letter, were actually a single application on its own and we process those all the time, then that that decision, if it were appealed by the applicant, would actually go to planning commission, not to council. So again, the the question here is, is the, is the process for reviewing different? Or are, are, is the intent of the code that other aspects, such as who can appeal, intended to change based on that, on that bundling?
Got it, okay, yeah, and that, that's it. A follow-up question I had was if the playground application gained any kind of advantage through this, and it sounds like it didn't, it actually resulted in a more rigorous application process because of the bundling?
I, I think that that is correct from my perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dever?
Oh, I was going to add, I wanted to add on to, to respond to Counselor Tivnan's question about, about the bundling. And I mean, the reason for the consolidation is to, is for efficiency of review. And I think that i- if council were to consider that consolidating somehow elevates the type one to a type three, then an applicant can simply, you know, apply for them separately, which would defeat the purpose of reviewing these applications efficiently. You know, they would instead apply for that type one application and demand that it not be bundled with the other applications. So that's part of why it doesn't seem like that's what the code intends. So I just wanted to add that.
Counselor Dever?
I have a question, and I think this is probably for you, Robin. Particularly on, on that first one, the appellant's standing to appeal. Are there legal conditions we should be thinking about, particularly like precedents as far as like, has this situation happened before where we denied, you know, without consideration of the council? And is this going to open us up to potential litigation or like reviewing older decisions now? If we do this differently, you know, is there anything we should be considering there?
Well, I, I don't think it's going to open it up past decisions that have been made, and certainly this decision is is open to challenge, whatever you decide. But I, I would just say that it, it, it might change the way applicants apply for their, their development proposals when they include multiple applications, if it includes a type one. And council finds that as soon as it's bundled with other applications, that type one is now elevated to a type three or something that basically expands the right of other people to appeal the application, well, the applicant has an interest to not bundle the applications. And so that is, that would, I think that's what we would see.
Yeah, we, so we would be creating an incentive structure that promotes inefficient transaction, essentially. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct, that's correct.
Uh, I think that's all I had. I, I don't think I have any other questions about this right now.
Okay, is the staff presentation finished?
If I can unmute myself, yes, that does conclude staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you. Now it's time for the applicant's presentation. Applicant, you have ten minutes to present. Is there applicant here?
I think.
No?
I, I see, I, I see the applicant here on the attendees list with their hand raised. I believe it's Daniel Hauser and Jenna Hori.
Would you like to give presentation?
City recorder, are you able to promote both Dan, Daniel Hauser and Jenna Hori?
We're trying, the appellant is arguing with us in chambers. Are we doing the appellant or the applicant? The appellant is under the premise that they go first.
No, that, that is incorrect. The procedure is the applicant goes first if the applicant is not the appellant, and then the appellant's go first. So the applicant, and then the appellant's go next. And that is in our city code fifty point eighty seven.
Thank you, Robin. Jessica's going to promote the applicant now.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Jenna Hori, I'm one of the founding board members of Ash Creek Play School. I no longer have preschool-aged children, but I care enough about the future and viability of the school that I've helped run for several years, that I want to see them through this land use process. I did have three children that all attended Ash Creek at various points. Okay, so our, our biggest point that we want to make tonight was kind of covered by staff presentation, despite what evidence may have been presented in the appeal, we are in total agreement with the city staff interpretation that this is not eligible to be appealed by anyone other than us, and we're certainly not appealing this ruling. The Beaverton Development Code states that type one applications can only be appealed by the applicant, and we are not appealing the planning commission ruling specifically on this design review compliance letter. So we believe that should make any testimony provided from this point on, from either side on this issue, irrelevant, and so I hope the city council sees this as a pretty simple issue. The original land use orders contained information on the appeal process that were included by mistake, and the appellant's were notified of this on November twenty second, but wanted to proceed withholding this hearing anyway. So despite that irregularity in the process, we think the city should follow the code and not consider these appeals. But out of an abundance of caution, we wanted to provide some additional evidence to support the original ruling that was made. So the group of neighbors who oppose this preschool and any expansion of the use of this property have been very creative, I would say, in leveraging the development code and making arguments that support their position. So we just wanted to make sure that in addition to relying on the code language regarding the eligibility of this appeal, we want to confirm that the original ruling was in fact correct. So, so I mean, sorry, I'm going to zoom out a little bit. So I wanted to provide a little bit of history on this application. I know the staff report covered that a little bit, sorry, I'm trying to zoom out here. So Ash Creek Play School began the process of modifying the conditional use permit that covers preschool enrollment in twenty twenty two. And while we were working on this application, that's when we realized there had been some site modifications done between two thousand and one, when the building expansion happened, and the current conditions. So we had discussions with the church trustees, who were trying to look into this issue and find out the history of that, you know, the changes that occurred on the site. So they helped us interview members who've been involved during those years, but very little formal documentation on the project was found. People involved in the playground expansion were volunteers, trying to help the church in good faith to kind of improve their property. They expressed that they had no idea that a permit was required for this change. However, we now realize that a land use permit should have been applied for at the time. So Ash Creek voluntarily took on the responsibility for submitting that application on their behalf and trying to get that retroactive approval, so that our conditional use permit regarding preschool enrollment could proceed. So even though this work happened on site years before our preschool was founded. So the two thousand and one CUP for the expansion of the church shows a five hundred square foot playground area. There's also an additional swing identified on the site plan outside of that space. So that may not be relevant, but the fact that there's a swing set shown on the plans outside of that five hundred square feet, kind of, I think, indicates that the actual playground area at the time was more than five hundred square feet, which is just something that's been referenced a lot in terms of the scale of the expansion. I don't think it's true that the, the playground prior to this project was really limited to five hundred square feet. I think that was the footprint of the original piece of playground equipment. But again, so we determined that the new playground equipment and the associated site grading work was done in late twenty ten and into two thousand and eleven. site grading work was done in late 2010 and into 2011 based off a receipt that was found for the playground, um, structure. That was the only like written record we were able to find, uh, regarding this project that happened. So in reviewing the existing conditions for compliance with development code for this design review, uh, we went through a clean water services review. And so it was determined that the only thing, um, on this whole site that needed to be done to bring the existing conditions accounting for this project that was done back in, you know, 2011 up to, uh, full compliance was to enhance the vegetated corridor. It's kind of shown on the other side of this fence here in the photos, um, that exists between this developed area and a wetland that's kind of down beyond, um, that fence. So some of the newly bark-chipped, when I say newly, I mean, new as of 2011, some of this bark-chipped area, uh, kind of encroaches into what would be required for a vegetated corridor buffer. And so we've kind of worked with them to develop a plan to provide planting mitigation on the site to make up for that space. There is, um, space available, let's see, kind of up here, a little bit outside of the photo, um, that can be used for that mitigation area. So without getting into the details of this vegetated corridor, all we need to do on the site is take out some invasive species, plant some native, um, plants, and we will actually kind of improve the conditions, uh, just by going through this design review, process, you know, that's been identified, and we'll do some enhancement of that corridor, um, whenever it's seasonally appropriate to do those native species plantings. Let's see, um, okay, so aside from all the administrative stuff, um, you know, why should this be, um, approved? So by constructing this playground and allowing it to be available for, um, public use, uh, Murray Hills was advancing one of Beaverton's stated livability goals. The comprehensive plan goal 3.8.1, uh, complete and livable neighborhoods states, uh, that one of the city goals should be to ensure the integration of parks and schools into neighborhoods and locations are safe, convenient connections from adjacent neighborhoods on foot and by bike are or will be available. So we reference that, um, goal for this design review process. We'll also reference that later in the next, um, hearing. So we think this expanded playground site, but they're allowing the public use to use does exactly that. So as I stated before, our design review application, um, shows that this project, you know, complies with all of development codes that are required and applicable. Let's see, so providing parks within neighborhoods is generally considered to be a benefit and an increase to the livability of a neighborhood. This particular location is a great spot to have this playground area since there are no public parks in close proximity. The nearest park is, you know, across the way, there's a very small playground a half mile away across a very busy street. So this is providing a great benefit to the neighborhood that doesn't exist without this space. It's clear that a handful of the neighborhood or the neighbors who live in closest proximity would prefer to live in silent tranquility, and the noise from our playground disturbs that. Some of them have referenced being here for decades and wanting the neighborhood not to evolve with time. So I sympathize with people who may not like changes to occur in their neighborhood, but the entire community must change and grow to meet the needs of everyone, not just those who happen to buy homes decades ago. The city has made policy decisions to promote parks and neighborhoods as a way of enhancing livability for children and families. That should not be blocked by people who claim to care about children, but then note that they do not want these improvements to occur in their own backyard. So let's consider what is being asked here. The city is being made or being asked to make a ruling that goes against their stated goals and has long-term implications to placate current residents immediately surrounding the playground. This does not seem like an appropriate reason to determine this land use order. So if you have reviewed the case file, you are probably confused at how such a simple project generated a 952-page file. It's ridiculous, and we are just as confused. So I truly sympathize with people who are not happy with what is happening next door. But I feel like the city code is being weaponized by people who seem to have an extreme amount of time, um, on their hands and trying to fully review all of the testimony and put together responses to address each item has been an overwhelming amount of work, and that's, uh, felt like a deliberate tactic. The appeals to argue that the application should be denied for reasons related to the administrative processes of the application or make the case that the existing conditional use permit should not be allowed to be modified, uh, should not be considered. The submitted applications to appeal this provide no arguments that the actual playground expansion and the existing conditions on the site do not meet code. The arguments really focus on the process of the appeal and the approval process that we went through. They do not make the case, they do not make any case, let alone a compelling one, for why this project does not actually qualify for approval based on its merits. So I'd like to point people to the city staff report, which carefully and accurately rebuts all of these procedural claims. And just to make the point again, that there were no arguments about the actual approval criteria for this application.
Thank you.
It was all focused on processes. Okay, perfect, I'm, I'm done.
Yeah, thank you so much. Are there any questions of the applicant? I see none. Okay. We are now moving on to the appellant's presentation. Our first call, Ronald Sadler. Mr. Sadler, you have 10 minutes to present. Mr. Sadler in the attendance?
Counsel President. Edward, we're getting the two gentlemen in the room here. I'm not sure Mr. Sadler is present, but two others are.
Okay, then, uh, we'll move on to, uh, Mr. David Goldar. Is he present?
He is present.
You have 10 minutes to present to the council.
This is Doug Gordon speaking, Counselor. Is it possible, uh, for me to go first?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. My name is Doug Gordon. I live at 10050 Southwest 151st Place, and that is the property that's immediately adjacent, pardon me, to the church property. Uh, I've lived there, uh, for 28 years. I lived in Beaverton for 45-plus years. Couple of introductory thoughts here. As you know, the owner of the property is the Murray Hills Christian Church. It began leasing to Ash Creek in 2018 for both interior space as well as the, uh, outdoor playground. Now, uh, there's been much said about, uh, what is at issue here, but let me just begin by saying, rather, the, I think it's been covered and it's obvious. Number one, we have a type one design review, uh, application, and that relates to aesthetics. Then there's the, uh, type three, which relates to land use. We're here, uh, at this time on the type one. The planning commission ruled that, to allow the approval of the playground. We ask the city council to reverse that order based on many legal mistakes that are embedded in the order, and it's incorrect. Uh, we'd like to also mention that we have, uh, submitted into the record 23 petitions with objections from neighbors who live around the church property to both the type one and type three, uh, applications. And I'm gonna bring, uh, that over to be seen in a minute. Also, I, while I'm, uh, doing that, I'd like to ask, uh, and point out to city council members that, uh, I'm going to be referring to exhibit numbers, which can be found in the agenda bill number 24163. And my submission begins at age 87, and the exhibits begin at page 115. If you can see, uh, this, uh, this is a, a map showing, uh, encircled in a red, the 23 lots, families that object to these, uh, applications. Uh, in addition, uh, the city council, uh, should be aware that this is the fifth, repeat the fifth time, that, uh, this, these questions have come before the planning commission and the city council, and those are detailed in the submission. The rulings, uh, the ruling that we're appealing was a unanimous decision. When we get to the type three land use, that was three to one to deny, and we urge that deference be paid to that decision by the planning commission, who is well-qualified, listened to four hours of testimony, and ruled that the applicant, Ash Creek, had failed to carry its burden of proof. Uh, in going, uh, further, uh, whatever you decide is gonna have far-reaching consequences. There's two different, two, uh, main overarching questions. And one, uh, has to do with the degree to which the city council is going to protect our rights to livability of our homes and neighborhoods and our right to use our, uh, homes freely and appropriately as they're intended without a noise invasion from the church property, which relates directly to the Ash Creek Play School presence. Second thing, uh, and major issue is are these land use procedures required by the development code going to be enforced as they're written, or are they going to be bent for the benefit of this particular app, applicant, uh, which the staff is, uh, is recommending you do? We all agree that educational opportunities, preschool opportunities, uh, for affordable childcare and education is an important and worthy goal, but that's a legislative and policy matter. What we have here relates only to the enforcement of the Beaverton Development Code. And, uh, in that regard, uh, whether the policy, uh, consideration is good or not, that does not displace the need for the applicant to comply with all the city's land use laws and regulations, which we've detailed in, in our submissions, uh, which have, uh, they failed to meet. On standing and jurisdiction, uh, I've listened to the explanation, and it's been, uh, in my respectful opinion, way too complicated. This is really a simple, clear-cut decision. And let's clarify, the rules are clear and unambiguous, and they're found in chapter 50. The rules mandate that certain procedures be followed, and it's not a matter of applicant choice. Uh, I would refer you to 50.70.4, which states that a, a type three, uh, decision by, a process by the city council has to be, uh, decided by, I said city council, by the planning commission, has to be decided, uh, uh, by the planning commission. And when a type one is included, it has to be decided by the planning commission. There's no choice. And beyond that, uh, it's very clear in the section I just cited that the appellate, uh, the, uh, decision making the, uh, authority on the appeal, namely, the planning commission of a type three decision shall be the city council's. In other words, it, it comes to you properly. Next, uh, point I'd like to make, and you, you have these, uh, as exhibits, uh, 11 and 12. Pivotal here are the, uh, 2000, uh, conditional use permit and the earlier one in 1994. The 1994 does permit a Montessori school for 20 students. That was the only, the only decision made in that order was that the Montessori school could operate within, I'm quoting, within the building. It's not, there was never any approval given to any small play area or anything like that. That was considered an incidental use that didn't need approval. Uh, it's, so it would never was approved, and, uh, if you read the plain unambiguous language of the order, uh, that confirms that the only thing that was approved was the school to operate within the building, church building. In 2000, the issue was the enlargement of the building. That was approved. There was no discussion whatsoever, no decision made whatsoever to approve any, uh, playground of any sort. And so that's the way this comes to you, is that this playground was constructed without any approval. It never had been approved, and it needs to be proved, uh, as a, by a land use process, not a, a design review. It's not looking at, you know, the, the size or the aesthetics of the, uh, equipment. It's looking at the use of the, uh, area as a playground. And, uh, it would be very important, uh, and you'll see this in my declaration, which is attached to the submission I've been referring to, that, um, this playground was, uh, constructed in 2010 or 11, and it was constructed specifically to be a, uh, public playground. If you read my declaration, I quote the, uh, discussion I had with one of the church trustees who told me that it was built to, uh, invite the community in, in the hope of getting additional members, uh, to the church. Uh, it's, requires a land use, uh, application under the, uh, uh, chapter 20 of the code, not a design approval. So, uh, the conclusion here is that the design approval process was the wrong process to obtain approval for the playground. It should be a land use approval matter, which is a type three, not a type one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Are there any questions of the appellant? I see none. Let's have, uh, is Mr. David Goldar there?
Uh, m- mister, uh, I'll finish up. This is Doug Gordon. Uh, Ron Sadler is sitting here at the testimony table.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Sadler, um, you have 10 minutes to present.
Uh, this is Doug Gordon again. I'm, uh, requesting that, uh...
Mr. Gordon, could you please wait? I'm having my assistant ask the attorney for guidance. You are not the attorney in this matter.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't realize that. My apologies.
Okay, please hold.
Okay.
Robin, um, if I could get your advice, um, Ron, Ronald Sadler that's here in council chambers, uh, was asking if we could have David Goldar, that, who's online, go before him? Is that possible?
Sure, that's fine. They can, they can go in a different order.
Okay, thank you.
David Goldar?
Everyone over this evening. Just to point a question here, do I have presentation rights?
Let me go ahead and promote you really quickly, and then you'll, you should be able to share your screen.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate your time here tonight. I will see if I can share my screen here in a moment, at which point I will bring this up for you. A couple of points I'd just like to address this evening that have already been shared to address questions. First of all is that we're not in opposition to kids or use of playgrounds or other things. Our opposition is quite simple. It's to the loud, unmitigated noise that's coming from the playground. The site was never designed for this large of a playground, and that's what's presenting the problem. It's preventing us from using our homes because we can't hear each other, we can't talk to folks, and we certainly can't sleep at times. So make no mistake, we've been next to some form of a playground, as well as a school in my case, for over 25 years. This is about, this is about site design. It's not about the kids. And that's what our objections are about here this evening. The site doesn't have proper design, and something needs to be done about it, and that's why we're here raising objections. I did want to point out, in terms of standing, I disagree with staff. The code is actually incredibly clear. If you turn to 15, or excuse me, BDC 5015.3, and I will read it to you, "An appeal of the decision will be processed according to the provisions of Section 50.70 of this code." That is a type-three appeal, and the jurisdiction is the city council. We qualify under 50.70, and I'm not certain why they think there's confusion on this matter. In turning to our actual appeal that's before you, I just want to draw attention to a couple of things. This is so much more than just a small issue that you might think with a playground. This actually potentially has a very profound impact on how the city actually processes land use requests in the city, because what's being done right now is a process that's contrary to the code and has far-reaching implications. There's three in particular approval criteria that we submit has not been satisfied the applicant, and I will go ahead and walk you through these particular ones. The first one is criteria number three, in that they did not satisfy 50.25.1. And in particular, this just requires an application checklist and a signature by the applicant, as well as the property owner, or the property owner's agent. Now, in this particular case, this was never actually found in the record. There is no application actually in the record that looks like this one, because it doesn't exist. It was never actually submitted. Now, staff assert that there was some type of computer problem. Well, that's just not credible, because in the next hearing, you're actually going to see the application that they submitted. Not to mention, if there was computer problems, staff should have informed the applicant, and they should have submitted this form, because that's what's required in the code. And then finally, they should have actually informed the Planning Commission that they did not have this application, if in fact they didn't have it. Finally, when you actually look at what was submitted, this is the actual request that was submitted by the applicant, and the applicant is not the property owner. So you had a Planning Commission decision that issued a legal order that's based on a request from somebody that doesn't even own the property, who didn't even sign this request. Now, you might be thinking to yourself, why is this a big deal? And this is kind of procedural in nature. Well, it's not, actually. What has happened here is city staff has invented some type of new process in which you could submit a request for a land use change or a design review letter, and all you have to submit is actually a narrative. And by the way, you don't even need to own the property. So going forward now, we're going to have a new process where anybody in the entire city can request any type of change to any property, and they actually don't even need to sign it. This is going to have profound implications. If this was just limited to a tenant, tenants can now change the property they don't own. So you're going to end up having commercial owners, owners that are large corporations, turn around and go, what is going on here? And guess what? You're going to get sued. The city's going to have to pay. We're going to have to pay legal expenses. People are going to, like me, you're going to have to invest a lot more time and money to actually protect our rights, and these are not procedural rights. As I already said, this is preventing us from using our property at times. This is very important, and there's simple procedures in the code that need to be followed, and they did not follow it in this case. As a result, the decision is legally null and void, because there was never a request from the property owner for this decision. Now, staff would like to think that you can fix this by submitting an application after a decision has already been made. This recently was submitted by the property owner as of November 21st and received as of November 22nd. This is after the hearing. This is after the legal order that was issued, and this cannot actually be part of the record, because it wasn't even fair for them to consider in the first place. This is a brand-new request from the property owner, who knows that they actually did not submit the application. As such, it should be processed as a new design review letter, and as such, it should go through the proper process. You see, folks, we got a serious problem here. The process wasn't followed, and it's going to create legal liability for the city. And fortunately, the applicant, or in this case, the actual property owner, is going to fix that for us. Send this back through the process, as it should have been processed in the first place, which provides us the protection that we need for the applicant, for the property owner, for everybody involved, including the city itself. Now, you might get a request, as you just heard from Mr. Regner, stating that, hey, it's here now, it's not a big deal, we can include that as part of this request. Actually, you cannot. Condition of approval, or forgive me, approval criteria number 11 specifically states that applications and documents have to be submitted to the city in the proper sequence. And in this particular case, it was submitted by the property owner themselves. So no, you cannot consider this tonight. What has to be considered is only what was before the Planning Commission, and there was no application before the Planning Commission by the property owner themselves. And then finally, I'll point out, there's a failure to satisfy approval criteria number one, which is that the threshold requirements for design compliance review letter actually were not met. As you heard, city staff state, they assert that this is an accessory use, it's incidental and subordinate to the church. That's incorrect in two ways. First of all, this playground is actually being used by the public, not the church. It's also being used by a school, and that's mandatory. As far as it being incidental, code definition for incidental, since it's not defined in Chapter 90, is actually Webster's Dictionary, and it states it has to be of minor consequence. Ladies and gentlemen, I can't use parts of my home at times, and neither can 22 others of my neighbors. Is that a minor consequence? No, of course it's not. And so therefore, it doesn't satisfy this definition, and a conditional use process is actually required. Furthermore, this is the actual threshold requirements for a design review compliance letter. There's no application, which automatically fails this to start with. There was no measurement submitted by the applicant themselves, stating that the structures are less than 1,000 square feet, and city staff can't provide them for them. And then finally, this is not a permitted use in the underlying zoning district. Let's take a look at the code itself. Permitted means that it's permitted, it's P. Conditional use means it's C, and prohibited means it's N. Childcare is C. Places of worship, C. Playground, R, C. City staff would like you to think that C equals P, or that a permit for a conditional use is the same thing as it being permitted throughout the underlying district. It's not. They need to go back to 10.20 and read the code on how it's supposed to be interpreted and applied, because apparently they're using some other standard, or trying to create some other type of creative argument here that simply isn't correct. The code has to be literally read, and here's why this is a huge impact. Not only is it impacting myself and my neighbors, I raised this at the Planning Commission. Nobody has actually checked to make sure that this playground is accessible for disabled children. And I know by looking at it and the fact that my own adult child is disabled, that it's not. Now, I'm not faulting the church. Maybe they made a mistake, but the city needs to address this. City staff says it's not our job. It's not part of the legal requirements, it's part of the design review. And as morally repugnant as that is to say, unfortunately, they are correct. It's not a legal requirement, design review. Do you know what is? Conditional use. It is a requirement under conditional use. So if you uphold this order, we're going to have a couple of problems. First of all, we're going to have significant legal liability for the city. And second, you're going to fail to protect some of these communities who, citizens who are most vulnerable, people who are retired and the elderly, and disabled kids. Is that really what you want to do, is to say no to those people? I don't think so. So what we're asking is really quite simple. Overturn the decision, because it's legally null and void and does not comply with what this city wants to be. Second, send that new application back through the approval process so that it's done right. And third, mandate city staff to follow and enforce the code. Ladies and gentlemen, this isn't too much to ask. This should have been very easily solved.
Thank you, Mr. Golda.
Fortunately, this is where we find ourselves today. So with that, I also just wanted to say thank you. Thank you to the city council. Thank you for your time, as well as your work on behalf of all of us. And now I'll open it up for any questions.
Does anybody have a question for the appellant? I see none. Thank you. We have Mr. Sadler ready to go?
Yes.
Okay. You got 10 minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to clear up a couple of things. Mr. Regner doesn't bother to give the city council the actual facts. I am going to talk about facts. We received from Mr. Regner a notice of decision. In there, that notice of decision included how we were to appeal parts of the decision. It told us how, it gave us a deadline, and we met the requirements. We filed the paperwork, we paid the fee, and moved forward. About roughly two weeks later, on a Friday, I come back from business meetings, and I have an email from Mr. Regner that says, oh, we made a mistake, you can't appeal the playground. But if you do appeal it, you only have until Monday to decide to go forward with the appeal. That's already been placed, the money's paid and accepted. And if you don't, then you can go forward with the appeal. We didn't create the problem. I didn't create the problem. Mr. Regner created the problem. The application, Mr. Regner tells us, was deemed complete in July. Twice I requested in emails copies of the signed application, applications for both the conditional use permit and the design review. I also asked for signed document for Murray Hill Christian Church to give Jerry, or Jenny, excuse me, Hori, the ability to conduct these two applications. Nothing came to me with a signature. 50.25.1A says a complete application, the owner or the authorized agent must sign it. That's the very first item that must be done. That wasn't done. On 11/21, realizing, we were told by Mr. Regner in writing, that there was a complete application for both of these situations in July. On 11/21, Sharon Jarman, she is the committee chairman of Murray Hill Christian Church Property Committee, signed the document. That was after everything had already occurred. I brought this up at the Planning Commission hearing, and then brought it up again before the Planning Commission. After I was through, Mr. Regner said that two things had happened. Two hours before the October 9th Planning Commission hearing, he had gotten a signed application. Then, at the Planning Commission hearing, he said that, rather glibly, that Exhibits 3.8 and 3.9 were the signed applications as part of the agenda. That was an utter fabrication. They were nonexistent. The applications themselves are not valid applications, because they were not signed and then acted upon correctly. Oh, I'd also like to mention that Mr. Regner likes to call the playground an expansion. No, I've lived there in the neighborhood and in my house immediately adjacent to the southeast corner of the church property 32 years. I know what has happened there. It wasn't an expansion, because originally, all that was there was, all that was there was a picnic table, a set of backyard, backyard swings, and some sort of low-level climbing structure. Those were wiped away. You may have to just do it on here. Okay. Sorry. Anyway. It wasn't an expansion. All of it was taken away. Those three little items in a 50 by 50 area were taken away. Douglas is showing you the church in 1994, the church with the, that's building, showing the black outline, and the playground area is the yellow. Now, these aren't my diagrams. These are what came from the CUP. Additionally, then, in the next one, you can see- You have to point it at that, at this one up here. No, not that one. This one back here. Okay. Does it have to be on the desk? Okay. Okay. And consequently, then, I'm not sure which one that is, Douglas. Does that show the whole? Oh, okay. Once again, the 2000 conditional use permit shows the same yellow area of the tiny playground. Now, we're going to look at, all of these, once again, are not produced by us, but produced by the, by Murray Hill Christian Church with their CUPs. You'll see the church building, the extension, and this massive pink 8,500-square-foot playground, which is 17 times bigger than the original playground. Oh, by the way, also, the bark dust that Ms. Hori mentioned wasn't put down 10 years ago, it was put down two years ago. Completing things that I'd like to say on this particular item, the playground- However, you can get it. I think you have to point it more at the camera. The net result of expanding that playground and not having 20 kids- and not having twenty kids is having sixty kids, three times the size. Now, the playground, the photo that was presented by Ash Creek only showed part of the playground. This shows part of the actual playground, and then the next photo will show the whole playground or, or more of the playground. It's a whole lot different. If, as a realtor of fifty-two years, who, among other things, I testify as an expert witness in trials, I authored the sale agreement that the vast majority of, uh, transactions are written upon in the state of Oregon. Uh, there's been modifications since I drafted it, but I did the original. In any event, um, when, when property goes on the market, like the red ones that you saw on the large map, people that don't want the expansion, um, we're going to have to disclose as realtors, this noise problem. This is going to cause a five to ten percent reduction in value. I have a degree in mathematics, and I can prove it. The decrease in value will be the responsibility of the church and whoever allows this to occur, and that happens to be the city of Beaverton. The letter from November twenty-one showing Sharon's signature is about four hundred pages into the nine hundred and fifty-two pages. Good way to bury it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are there any questions of the appellant? I see none. Now is the time for testimony in support of the appeal. City recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak in support?
Um, Ms., Mr. Council President, we did have, um, Jessica, can you make sure those mics are off? Thank you. Uh, we did have a Christian, Christine Gilfian, who had registered, but, um, we did not hear back from her if, yeah, she was here for the design review hearing or for the conditional use. Um, Jessica, could you check online for Christine? It's gonna take us a bit, we have quite a few people online.
I see her hand raised.
Okay, she has raised her hand. Uh, Jessica, could you go ahead and promote her to speak?
So, okay. Uh, first.
Hi.
Yeah, are you here to support the appeal?
I am here for the second issue, the Ash Creek issue, not for the playground issue.
Oh, okay, then you need to wait until that, here it comes along.
Thank you.
And, um, we had a, a late email come in from Esmeralda Gonzalez. I don't know if she's online. She also did not indicate which hearings, so.
I have a Matt Spector, Sarah raised the hand.
So we did not have anyone else indicate to the city recorder's office that they were gonna speak for public hearing number one. But they can certainly speak now if they want. Um, so if people have their hands raised, we'll just take them in order.
Okay, Sarah?
Hi. Uh, Sarah, Sarah Killian, do you need my address?
Yeah, you need your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Uh, when you finish speaking, the council members may ask questions related to your comments.
Okay, can I ask you something first?
Oh, no.
Okay, I'm just gonna go then. Uh, Sarah Killian, one five five one nine Southwest Bristol Cone Way, Tiger nine seven two two three. I used to teach at Ash Creek Preschool, and both of my kids went to Ash Creek Preschool. And I just had a quick question about the last testimony about, I think his name is Rand. He was showing some pictures of the playground, and I felt that they were misleading because he showed a picture that showed the complete playground. And the second two pictures were actually zoomed in photos to show detailed structures within that original larger picture. So I just felt, I just wanted to clarify, that seemed a little bit, um, like it wasn't really a truthful representation of what the playground looks like. It really is just that one first picture encompassed all of it. And to the left of that picture, it showed a blue, uh, canopy. It is only up during the summer months, so that's not even up there all the time.
I'm sorry, uh, can I hold, uh, is this, uh, time for support of the appeal?
Yes, I do, I support Ash Creek, yes.
Yeah, then you gotta wait. We go with support first, and then opposition, and then indifference, so.
Okay, I apologize, I just wanted to clarify the, the photos that I just saw.
Whoever's raised their hand, here, we're, right now, time for support of the appeal. If not, um, please lower your hand.
Council President, can I just add a clarification also? Might be helpful. Support of the appeal means you're in support of reversing the planning commission's decision to approve the, the design review compliance letter.
Okay, uh, Matt iPad. If you're here, here for support of the appeal, um, you're up next. You have three minutes.
Yes, hello, this is Matt Bloom, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Um, I live at, uh, one zero one nine zero Southwest hundred and forty-ninth terrace, southeast corner of the church property. Um, and first of all, I'd like to, uh, thank Mr. Gordon, Mr. Sattler, and Mr. Goldar for their very in-depth, um, presentations. I don't have anything near that. Um, I, what I would like to talk about is the two items, um, that are really, really important. The first is the, as has been discussed before, it's the noise levels, um, the livability, and just appropriate use of my house. During nice days, I like to be able to open my windows, get a breeze going through my house. Um, eh, that tranquility tends to be disrupted when there are, uh, loud noises coming from the church that's, um, um, a hundred, what, fifty yards away is when the, uh, property starts. Um, and the playground itself is seventy-five or a hundred yards away. And even then, we still have to close our windows. Um, we can't even go out on our deck if it's gonna be that loud. Um, the, um, uh, other thing is, um, and I haven't heard it, uh, talked about too much, but with an increase of this amount of, uh, activity up at the church, it increases the traffic. And everybody at the, the, the Ash Creek, I believe it was, um, Ms. Hori was, uh, talking about, uh, for the children and for the kids. Well, what about the traffic that happens? Not everybody goes only ten miles an hour. There is safety concerns with an increase in traffic when you increase the size of, uh, of the playground and people go in there. Um, but as I stated before, my biggest issue is, is the noise and livability. If I wanted to live next to a huge playground with all that noise, um, we would have bought a house, um, twenty-four years ago near a school when we moved in here. Um, but we didn't. We liked the near dead end here, um, very nice. Um, but, um, an increase in noise in this, um, it, eh, it reduces our ability to be able to enjoy our property as, as we had intended. So I want to thank the council president and the city councilors, uh, for, for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a Robin McIntyre, um, city attorney.
Yeah, I just, uh, want to clarify, uh, again, that this, uh, this is the time for uh, testimony on the design review compliance letter application, which is just the playground expansion, not the, um, increased enrollment. So I just want to make sure that, uh, people who are here to testify on the, on the noise as it relates to the increased enrollment, you'll have that opportunity at the next conditional use, uh, public hearing. Just want to make sure that, um, everybody is aware of, this is the time for just that playground expansion, uh, application, appeal.
I hope everybody's clear. Um, Becky, you're up next in support of the design review of playground. Becky? You're muted. Oh, she's, she lowered her hand?
No, uh, she still had her hand raised. I, I'm not sure what's going on, but she does have permission to speak.
And council president, I saw the microphone symbol flicker. She might have been messing with it trying to get it to work, so.
Yeah, Becky, you're muted right now? Okay. So we'll move on, um, to the testimony in opposition to appeal. Uh, city recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Uh, this is for, uh, design review only, um. So Matt Spector, you're up next. Yes, please speak, you have three minutes to address the council.
Yes, hello, this is Matt Bloom, you were trying to, uh, Becky was having issues. Um, so Becky is here.
Okay.
So, all right, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I, I want to, um, kind of hit some points that, um, Dave Goldar, Von Sattler, and Douglas Gordon had brought up is that things happen where, um, they're, they're out of order, things, uh, proceed without permission, and then it's, they go and ask for permission afterwards. So, um, you know, that doesn't sit very well with me. It's, um, and then the fact that they get approval is, um, doesn't sit well. So, and I'm looking at the map, and they've expanded, and it's one of the closest points is seventy feet away from property. So, eh, eh, that's too close. Um, so I would like that to be taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Uh, can, before Becky goes, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, this is Becky Bloom at one zero one nine zero Southwest one twenty, one, one forty-ninth terrace. And I'm on the southeast corner as well.
Is there anyone else who's in support of the appeal? City recorder?
No, council president, there is not.
So we're moving on to testimony in opposition to appeal. City recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Oh, council president, there is not.
So now we're moving on to, um, uh, let's say, uh, the testimony neither in support nor opposition. City recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak?
No, council president, there is not.
Okay, there, there's no member of public who wants to speak in either in support nor in opposition. That concludes the public testimony. We will move on to the applicant's rebuttal. The applicant now has five minutes to respond to the testimony. The applicant here?
Okay, um, hello, so there was a lot, a lot of stuff covered. I'm gonna just first and foremost say, all of the points raised have been pretty clearly addressed in the staff report. There's just a lot of content there, um, too much to rebut point by point here. I'm confused. Um, but just the staff report has addressed all of those things. Some of the neighbors are attempting to, um, try to interpret code differently than the city has done after kind of extensive internal review. And so I think I would rely more on the city staff's judgment, um, with many people consulted on that, um. One topic that was raised was that the nineteen ninety-four CUP talks about how much square footage of the building may be used and doesn't say anything about allowing the preschool to use outdoor space. And, um, the appellants are trying to assert that that means therefore they're not allowed to use any outdoor space, and that's been kind of addressed as not being an accurate interpretation of that. A lot of, um, what I think David Goldar presented on was trying to say that the application, the, um, approval criteria were not met, but a lot of that was based on interpreting this as a public playground. The staff report, um, addressed the fact that just because this private property owner is allowing the public to use that space, that doesn't make this a public park per the city code definition for permitting process. So those arguments are really not valid. Um, a lot of time was spent talking about the, um, signed design review form. There has been a signed conditional use application signed by the property owner on file. And so when we submitted this, uh, design review through the electronic permitting system bundled with that, it is true that a separate form was not originally submitted for that, but the property owner has always been involved. There's always been something on file with their signature showing their support. So you, you can't make the case that just, hey, anyone can go appeal for a land use permit. We're not trying to do that without the property owner's involvement. They have always been involved. But designating Ash Creek as the ones to kind of act as the applicant through this process with their express support from the beginning. One of the documents that, um, was referred to as being submitted like two hours before a meeting wasn't necessarily a signed form. It was a signed document confirming that Sharon Jarman, who has signed the applications, did in fact have authority, um, from the board of trustees to do that because even though she had signed a form kind of years ago at the beginning of this CU, in, in twenty twenty-two, at the beginning of the CU process, that original application form this was bundled with, um, it was challenged that, hey, not enough proof is on file that she's even allowed to sign this form, so that shouldn't count. So that's what we got at the last minute was kind of documentation saying, yes, she's a trustee. Yes, in fact, she does have the authority to sign this. So we just kind of had to prove that, you know, that, that that was, not only was it signed, but it was signed by someone that, that was authorized to do so, um, on behalf of this, um, property owned by, you know, not an individual. Um, what else? Oh, it was mentioned that bark chips were put down two years ago. I just want to clarify that a few years ago, and maybe even a couple times in the past decade, um, the preschool has kind of worked with the church to maybe bring in some bark chips and flatten out some like lowered areas under the spray, under the swings. So, yes, some new bark chips were laid, but that was kind of to refurbish the playground. That wasn't the initial installation of, of bark chips. Like, we believe that was done, you know, more than a decade ago. And we've just kind of tried to clean and maintain what existed, uh, when we started. What else? Um, yes, I, all of those things, you know, there may be things that seem convincing the way they were portrayed. I just encourage people to please rely on the staff report interpretation that's addressed kind of everything that was brought up. Um, I got, that, that, that's it. I'll give up the last thirty seconds of my time.
Thank you. Um, does any member of the council have any questions for staff?
Council president, can we, I, I, I believe per the procedures of chapter fifty, there's an opportunity to staff to provide a response and. Council president, can we, I, I, I believe per the procedures of chapter fifty, there's an opportunity to staff to provide a response and we'd like to do that now.
Yeah, if there's no one, uh, who's asking questions, then we go to the staff rep, report, rebuttal. So we have, um, Allison, uh, councilor Tiflon, have a question for staff?
Uh, should I ask that question or should, uh, staff give their rebuttal to the, the presenters?
Why don't we go and let staff give their rebuttal?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Um, I will try and be quick here, looking at the time. Um, I'm gonna go through and, uh, speak to some of the comments provided. I'm gonna start by just a blanket statement that it's really important for council as decision makers to remember that, uh, the decision tonight is limited to the approval criteria, um, based in chapter forty. Um, there has been a lot of things discussed tonight that do not fall within the bounds of the approval criteria. Um, so I just wanna, wanna highlight that for everyone. Um, starting with Mr. Gordon's testimony, he makes an assertion that this i- item about the play area has been heard five times by the city. That is not correct. Um, there was the initial approval of the church in nineteen eighty-eight, the expansion in two thousand. Um, in that two thousand expansion, there was no assessment of the play area, no focus, no change to the play area. Um, this application before you tonight and the original designer view compliance letter really are the first time that there has been any discussion of expanding the play area since the initial, um, approval in nineteen eighty-eight. Um, there are references to conditional use permits in both two thousand and nineteen ninety-four. Uh, those have no bearing on the play area. Um, conditions of approval do not speak to the play area. Um, approvals in those conditions of approval, um, have no bearing on the play area or its ability to be modified, expanded, or otherwise changed in the future. Uh, Mr. Gordon also asserts that designer view is not a land use application. Let me be clear, designer view compliance letter is a land use application. It is the appropriate land use application for the expansion of this play area. Thresholds identified, um, in chapter forty, including modifications to grading and modifications to lighting. It is a land use decision. Uh, moving on to Mr. Gold's testimony, uh, Mr. Gold makes statements that the site does not have proper design. Uh, Mr. Gold did not elaborate on what he means by that, but staff will note that there are specific design review standards that apply. Uh, findings to those applicable design view standards are found in the October second, twenty twenty-four staff memo, um, finding that all applicable regulations are met. Um, Mr. Gold moves on to criterion three, speaking to the application form, noting that no property owner, uh, signature or authorization was obtained, uh, before the approval. Uh, this is not correct. Um, the, uh, exhibit three point nine of the original staff report, that's page one fifty-six of your agenda bill, um, indicates that, um, that Ash Creek and Sharon Jarman have the ability, um, and authorization to submit applications on their behalf. That was provided October ninth, prior to planning commission's decision. Um, the subsequent clean, clear application form was submitted subsequent. However, this is a subsequent to planning commission's decision. However, this is a de novo hearing, meaning that new evidence can be introduced to support, uh, whether or not an application meets the findings. Application or exhibit APP two point one in staff November twenty-six memo demonstrates, um, that at this hearing, uh, that threshold has very clearly been met. Moving on to Mr. Sattler, uh, Mr. Sattler raises issues about, um, notices of decision stating that they had, uh, standing to appeal both land use applications. I think that's a little bit of an oversimplification. Um, every member of the public who provides written or oral testimony at a public hearing gets said notice. Um, the distinction here is that because the conditional use permit was a type three, they have standing to appeal that decision. However, because the design review compliance letter is a type one, only the applicant has standing to appeal that decision. The applicant received the notice just as everyone else did. Um, so clarification on that note. There are, um, public testimony about noise levels and tranquility. Um, well, staff is, um, un- understands that position. Um, staff reiterates that the decision here tonight is based on the applicable land use, uh, approval and the approval criteria in chapter forty, uh, for design view compliance letter. And noise levels and tranquility are not one of those approval criteria. Um, and finally, there is public testimony about, you know, having misgivings about retract approvals. To be clear, staff does not like work to be done without permits. This is not the way we'd have liked to see this happen. But accidents happen, oversights happen, and we have a process to retroactively deal with these, which is a design review compliance letter approved by planning commission on October twenty-third. Um, I believe that is everything staff has in rebuttal to applica- or to testimony provided. Um, we're prepared to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Tiflon?
Thank you. Um, I, I'd like to revisit the one you had just mentioned about the neighbors receiving a letter that they could appeal. Sounds like there was some confusion on behalf of the appellants in this regard. Is it possible to share your screen and, and for us to see that letter? Um, uh, uh, and if that isn't possible, then maybe just verbal description of, is it clear in there that, is the language clear in there or, or is it? Or is it not?
Yeah, let me, uh, let, let me share my screen really quick. I was able to pull up the notice here. Make sure I, multiple screens, always make sure I get the right one. Think I got it there. Okay. So, so this clarifies, so it says to a concern, planning commission has ordered these decisions. This was approved, this was denied. This is where you can find the decision legally. Um, and then there is this legalese about how one might appeal a decision. Um, this does not specifically say that you as the recipient have the right to or not appeal. I can certainly understand how that conclusion would have been reached. Um, if you're receiving an appeal, uh, or a notice and it talks about appeal, assuming you have the right to appeal. But with, uh, staff's, um, opinion on who has standing and who doesn't, um, staff would assert that the way this notice should be, um, interpreted, um, is that if you have standing, this is how you do it. And because there are two applications with two different, um, types of standing to appeal, um, that is not specifically articulated, um, in this notice. It's not legally required. Perhaps after, um, this confusion maybe becomes the best practice, um, especially if council finds, um, in their deliberations tonight, um, that only the applicant can appeal a type one. Um, certainly it's something we can look at at our best practices, but, um, nothing in here strikes us as a, as a legal error, um, consistent with our local code or, or ORS requirements.
Okay, and then I got a follow-up question to it. Thank you for that. Is, did they receive an email later on saying, um, sorry, this was our mistake?
Yes, yes. Uh, so essentially what happened is, um, we sent this letter out. Um, these, uh, three appellants indicated they were going to appeal. At that time, staff had not noticed that language and reached the interpretation, um, that we're talking about tonight. Um, and staff fully admits that is their error. Um, staff accepted the appeals, um, with the, um, understanding of the code that they did have standing. It was not until after the fact, uh, that city attorney's office, uh, raised this issue to planning staff noting, um, that this development code provisions is actually only the applicant can appeal for that. Once city attorney's office had made planning staff aware of that, we met internally quite quickly, um, realized that an error had been made and promptly notified all three appellants that city staff had made the error in accepting the appeals and provided them two options. Uh, one, they could, uh, withdraw their appeals and receive their appeal money hundred percent back. Or they could proceed, uh, with the understanding that we would be making, the city would be making the jurisdictional, um, appeal standing argument in addition to the substantive material arguments. Um, and all three, of course, uh, decided to move forward with the appeal.
Thank you.
Um, councillor Hassan?
Yeah, um, I just, okay, sorry, I thought I paused. Um, I want to take a moment and just, you know, let folks know who've called in and testify, like, I hear and understand concerns from our community and from different folks that are impacted by this issue. Um, I have sort of reviewed everything that's in front of us. I, I support staff, um, and I'm gonna make a motion, you know, in that direction. So, um, I'm gonna start to make the motion at minimum. I think it'd be good for us to have the discussion, but, um, here I go.
Wait, hold on.
Sorry.
Does the city attorney?
Oh.
Have anything to add before we make?
Don't talk too fast. I'll stop.
Uh, unless council has questions of me, uh, we've covered all of the issues, uh, throughout the presentation. So, um, I, I won't add anymore unless you have questions of me.
Council president, can we, if I could just, uh, one more item. Uh, reminder that there are two items to evaluate tonight by council. One is the standing issue and the other is the substantive, uh, material. So we recommend that council make two, uh, I, Robin, please correct me if I got this wrong, two separate motions, one for each of those two items. Robin, did I capture that correctly?
Uh, well, I, I've prepared some draft motions depending on which way you want to go. But, um, the, the motions include both a decision on the standing as well as a decision on the approval criteria.
Thank you very much.
Does any other member of the council have questions to staff or city attorney? I see none. Uh, councillor Hassan, you can make a motion.
Thank you. Um, I move to deny.
Hold on, um, councillor Peter?
No, no.
After, okay, okay.
I'm nervous. Uh, I move to deny the appeals numbered APPC two zero two four dash zero one zero four seven, APPC two zero two four zero one zero five zero and APPC two zero two four dash zero one zero six one, and affirm the planning commission's decision to approve LU three two, three two zero two three dash zero zero five five seven. Ash Creek Place School Playground Expansion DR one two zero two four zero 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 nine zero on the following basis. One, the appellants do not have the standing to appeal this type one decision. And two, even if the appellants had a standing to appeal, the appeals are denied because the application meets their approval criteria. Second.
It's, uh, seconded by councillor, uh, Heartmark Preig. Any discussion? Um, councillor Peter?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I support this motion. Um, I think code is, is very clear that non-applicants cannot appeal a type one decision. Um, section fifty point seventy point three says that the appeal of consolidated applications will be processed according to the type three procedure, uh, but it does not say that type one applications become a type three application, nor are they, uh, appealed according to a type three procedure. So I think it's, it feels very clear to me that the, uh, appellants don't have standing. Even if they did, the complaints that they've raised tonight and throughout this appeal process don't meet the criteria of our code. So I think I agree with staff recommendation here.
Councillor John Duggar?
Yeah, question, uh, uh, for the appeal decision tonight. How, did we charge them for a type one or a type three appeal decision? I don't know if that's, staff can answer that? Cause those were different dollar amounts, correct?
Um, I, I can address this question. They were charged for the type one appeal amount. Um, and that was actually one of the things that we discussed internally after the attorney's office made us aware of the error in regards to the parties with standing to appeal. It was also the question of, uh, given the procedural differences, um, what is the correct fee? Um, and we will be providing some clarity going forward in the future, but it did not seem appropriate to, um, to change the fee.
And then a follow-up question, and maybe this one's to you, Honor, or maybe Robin. If we find that they did not have standing to appeal and that this wasn't a legal procedure, uh, and, you know, in, in, do we, can we refund them the money, I guess? The two hundred, what is it, two hundred and?
It's two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Um, uh, Robin, I would invite your comments on that. It would, it would not be our practice to, um, when we did inform them of the error, we gave them the opportunity to withdraw the appeal and refund their money. Um, but given that they decided to proceed, um, my advice would be that it would not be appropriate to refund that money considering that, um, the amount of staff time that has been spent on this appeal far exceeds, um, that appeal fee. However, um, fees are something that council has the authority to, um, to waive. So if council wishes that to happen, um, then they can make their wishes known tonight.
And I will agree with that. Uh, the code definitely doesn't provide staff the discretion to be able to waive appeal fees. But that is something council can decide.
Yeah, I just, um, and, and I'm in support, uh, of denying the appeal and affirming, uh, the planning commission decision on the standing and the criteria. But it just feels to me like, uh, this is one of those ones where I normally would not support the, uh, refunding of the money. That's, that's kind of the game, you know, you have to, you have to play to see, especially with the amount of staff time that no doubt went into this. But it just feels like, if I'm saying that you don't have standing, then maybe it should not have cost them two hundred and fifty dollars for us to determine that they don't have standing. Uh, and I would support, um, because this is a unique situation, us returning the two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, at, at least as a precedent going forward, so we can pay.
I need to point a order, councillor Duggar, because I am not sure that, like, the, the, the refunding their money is not part of the motion whatsoever. And so I would love some guidance here on whether we, where.
I'm not changing the motion. I'm giving my opinion on that. Support the, the, the current motion, I guess.
Yeah, and the refund part is a completely different part of a conversation. And so it should not be part of the discussion tied to this motion, in my opinion. And I would love for, uh, Beagle to weigh in on that. Um, it's not part of the motion.
Uh, that's correct. You have a motion on the table and, uh, you should discuss, you should discuss and decide that motion. And then if you want to make another motion on, uh, the appeal fees, waiving the appeal fees, you can do that after. But, uh, right now you've got this one motion on the table to decide.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Uh, councillor Tifon?
Yeah, just since we're in the discussion mode of this, I'll say that, uh, this, that just from hearing all of the testimony from all sides of this, one, I understand that everyone is, uh, probably maxed out emotionally from, from going through this, um, from, from all vantage points. But it seems like this whole endeavor has been mired in periods of confusion along the way from the, the timing of the application and the who signed it and when to, uh, the, the, the property owner, the church, the school, uh, building up playgrounds without permission from the city in the first place. And we have no idea, um, why. We just left to speculate on that, which is never a good place to be. Um, to the city and the, the, the form going out that was not, uh, clear to residents that wanted to appeal it, to getting a letter saying, well, you weren't supposed to get it, but if you want to appeal, you can. And, and then, uh, it coming to us and us having to kind of wade through all of this, it's, this is quite a lot to go through. I, 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 I just, I can completely understand the frustration of the individuals that live around this school for a lot of reasons. And this process and how it is played out, I'm sure does not, does not generate confidence in the internal processes for the city when they see sta- staff saying things like accidents happen, mistakes were made. Um, and that, that seems to be true from, from what we have heard from staff, that there were mistakes made along the way. I do not see anything as it relates to this particular appeal, given that it's a de novo appeal that would cause me to overturn what the planning commission decided. But that being said, I, um, I, I'm very eager to weigh in on the, the refund conversation next. And, um, but as it relates to this, I, 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 I'm hoping that some of the language might change in that letter that goes out to, um, folks. And in terms of the bundling of this, maybe even having legal, look at the language around that and make sure we're not exposing ourselves to liability or getting. or getting ourselves in a situation where precedent like this might be set again in the in the future.
Okay. Assistant City Attorney Robin McIntyre, I have a question. Can Counsel Hassan withdraw her mo- motion and modify to include the refund?
Well, she she could if counsel consents to that. You can also go ahead and decide the motion on the table and then have a separate motion afterwards on the refund, which I recommend.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? I see none. We are ready for a vote on the ordinance adopted with the city recorder. Please call the roll.
Counselor Duggar?
Um, can, before I, can you clarify what yes and no means? Just so if I, yes is to deny the appeal?
Uh, ye- yes is to deny the appeal, which affirms the planning commission decision that approved the design review compliance letter that allowed for the playground expansion.
Got it. Got it. Thank you for that. Uh, yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counsel President Kimi?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty's absent motion carries.
Thank you. Does any counselor, yeah, Counsel Duggar?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion just because of this weird situation that we we refund the two hundred and fifty dollars since we found that they do not have legal standing. That was a critical part in. Yeah.
Seven.
This move by Counsel Duggar, seconded by Counselor Tivnan. Any discussion? Counselor Hartmeyer Prigg?
I was there first.
You were there first? Okay.
Yeah, thank you. We all popped in right around the same time. Um, I'm going to be pretty strong against this one. Staff recognized the error and they owned up to it. And then they gave the appellants the opportunity to withdraw the appeal, knowing that this situation is likely going to come or come out, come about in our council meeting. That appeals rate, the the charge was very low for the amount of staff time, the amount of community time that went into this and the amount of city council time dedicated to this. Again, the appellants knew that this could happen and moved forward anyways after they had the option to withdraw it. So I'm going to be no against this.
Counselor Hassan? Actually, Counsel Hartmeyer Prigg?
I I second what Counsel Teeter said.
Counselor Hassan?
Yeah, I I want to like show empathy towards folks who are trying to be involved and engaging civically in this. I do think that when we think of staff time and resources, it just, it's not a precedent I feel comfortable setting right now today.
Counselor John?
Yeah, I I I think I'm going to respectfully disagree with the three of you who have said this because we were actually tasked with deciding whether this was an appropriate standing. So although I I I hear you that the staff did warn them that it was possible, that the, and and maybe even likely. If we would have decided that in fact that 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 they had standing, because it it wasn't one hundred percent clearly defined, then in fact that appeals would have been appropriate or they would have at least had standing. And so I I do think if we would have had this conversation on the next one, I am one hundred percent in agreement with the three of you that that we would, we would now have kind of have had this discussion and it would be, you know, clear to our staff. So in in my mind, two hundred and fifty dollars is is going to be nowhere near the amount of payment I heard heard on it and I completely agree. Like we put in way much more than that. This is symbolic. So it's it's more of a, like, we now have our decision. We've now clarified things for our staff. To me, that this doesn't set precedence for us returning money for appeals. This, this was, we we clarified something and now we, 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 we have our future decisions made as far as whether people have standing or not. And so now that that's done, I'm willing to give them the two hundred and fifty back. That's all.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yeah, I I I agree with Counsel Duggar on this one. I think it's going back to the root of what caused the confusion in the first place was a letter going out that set this in motion. And hearing staff own up to that, it it it's great because it provides the room to go back and and fortify that letter and make sure that it's clear going forward. So I'm confident that that we won't hear that again, that we made that mistake. And you know, that in that particular area. And this is extremely complicated work. There's a lot of paperwork to go through. There's a murkiness around this that's very, I I'm I'm guessing just characteristic of this particular project that was going on and some some things around it that just made it tricky for for folks. And I I I really don't like the idea of residents in our community having interactions with the city where they they're put in a position where they they are caused quite a lot of confusion in the process of of working with the city and being a part of the good governance that we talked about. And I think it's a symbolic gesture to do this and then a commitment to not get in this situation again.
Counsel Hartmeyer Prigg?
Um, I I just, I firmly disagree with Counselors Duggar and Tivnan here. The appellants got their appeal. That's what we just did over the last however much time we've spent. They got their appeal. So the fee is rightly administered on them. And in our motion, we specifically stated that even if they had standing, their appeal is denied because the application met the approval criteria. They got their appeal. We are now the ones hearing the appeal. We're denying their appeal. So they should not get a refund. I will be voting no on this motion.
Okay. I will be voting no on the motion, the same reason Counsel Hartmeyer Prigg mentioned that they were told previously that also offered to return the money, but they went ahead with the appeal and they got their appeal. They got their case heard. So I'll be voting no on this motion. Counsel, City Recorder, could you call the roll?
Yes, Counsel President. Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer Prigg?
No.
Counselor Hassan?
No.
Counselor Kimi?
No.
Counselor Teeter?
No.
Two yes, four no. Motion fails.
Thank you. We would like to thank all who have testified tonight. The comments have been very helpful. If you'd like to appeal this decision, you must appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals in accordance with LUBAs, LUBAs rules and any applicable provisions in the Beaverton Development Code. I'd like to have ten minute break before we share the second hearing. Okay, this is the time and place for a public hearing on the appeals of the planning commission's denial of LU three two zero two three dash zero zero five five seven. Ash Creek Play School major modification of a conditional use. CU three two zero two three dash zero zero five five five. I'm, I now call to order the public hearing. Before we move to the substance of the hearing, I will ask the city attorney to cover some preliminary matters.
Thank you, Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney. This hearing concerns an appeal of the planning commission's decision to deny a major modification of a conditional use to allow an increase in enrollment for a childcare facility at the Murray Hills Christian Church. The applicant is Ash Creek Play School. The planning commission's decision was appealed by the applicant in this case. I will now explain the criteria the council must use to make its decision tonight. And then I will ask members of the council if they wish to make any disclosures. The applicant bears the burden of proving that the application is consistent with the Beaverton Development Code and the comprehensive plan. The criteria that must be addressed in this hearing are BDC forty point oh three point one Facilities Review Committee and BDC forty point fifteen point fifteen point four C, Major Modification of a Conditional Use. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards these approval criteria or other approval criteria in the development code or comprehensive plan that the speaker believes apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in circuit court. Section fifty point eighty five of the development code requires the council to be impartial and that council members may not have bias, personal or personal or business interest in the outcome of the application. To these ends, the following questions will now be asked. Do any members of the council wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest? Let the record show no response. Do any members of the council have an ex parte contact to declare?
City Attorney, the same ex parte contact that I disclosed in the last hearing where Ash Creek Play School had contacted me, asked to speak about the matter back in July, and I declined to speak with the, with Ash Creek Play School.
Thank you. Is there any other ex parte contact?
And the same for me.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, let me ask if any counselor wishes to declare any site visits. Let the record show no response. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the ability of the council to consider this matter or to challenge the ability of any council member to participate in this decision? City Recorder, do we have anybody?
No.
But the records show no response. I will now go over the procedure for this hearing. City staff will present the staff report. The applicant will go next with a presentation that will be limited to ten minutes. A recognized NAC, homeowners association, government agency or other organized group recognized by council will have up to five minutes to speak. Council will then take testimony from persons who wish to speak, which will be limited to three minutes each in the following order. First, from those who are in support of the appeal, then from those who are opposed, and finally, from those who are neither in support nor opposed. After the members of the public have testified, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. Rebuttal testimony shall be limited to testimony and evidence in the record. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. If you've joined this meeting online, you can click on the raise hand feature to let the city recorder know you wish to speak. When you speak, please give your first and last name and mailing address for the record. Counsel President, that concludes the preliminary legal matters.
Thank you. Let's proceed to the staff presentation.
Thank you, council members. Honest Latinsky, Planning Division Manager. I'm not going to repeat my remarks that I made at the beginning of the last appeal presentation, except simply to note that as before, your role is to decide whether or not this application meets the approval criteria. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Regner.
Sorry about the delay, moving around my PowerPoint slides. Because I have a second one here tonight. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Latinsky. Good evening, Council President Kimi, councilors. My name is Steve Regner, Senior Planner with the City Beaverton. And hopefully you can see my screen now. This is the second of two hearings regarding the Ash Creek Play School. This is APP twenty twenty four zero one zero six five, Appeal of a Major Modification of a Conditional Use. A little bit of maybe familiar information. This project started, it is a request to in increase enrollment at childcare facility and bundled with it was the retroactive approval of a play area, which council heard in the last hearing. Regarding the enrollment increase, the application applied for was the major modification of a conditional use permit. And that was denied at the Planning Commission's October twenty third, twenty twenty four hearing. The hearing tonight is to hear the appeal of that denial. And the application was appealed by the applicant. So in this case, the appellant and the applicant are the same party. I will try and use consistent language. I might slip up and say appellant or applicant. Apologies in advance. Just know that they are the same party tonight. Again, this is the location is Murray Hills Christian Church at one five oh five oh, Southwest Weir Road. It's about a four acre church campus located in neighbor southwest NAC and is the RM zone. And again, here is the site plan. Weir Road to the north, Southwest one fifty first place to the northwest. That vehicle driveway there is the main vehicle access point to access church. You'll see there is a vehicle access to the south, but that is chained off, I think only used for emergency access. So all users of the church, whether it's a church, Ash Creek Play School or other tenants of the church, will use that that northwest vehicle access point there. The church is shown in red, play area shown in green. And there are measurements denoting the proximity of the play area to the three nearest residential areas, seventy feet, one hundred thirty five feet and one hundred forty feet. As a little bit of context to proximity of the play area. Bit more on site history. As you probably recall, the church was originally approved in nineteen eighty eight. In nineteen ninety four, the original childcare facility, which I believe was Murray Hills Montessori School, was approved in nineteen ninety four. That was limited to twenty students and two staff. If you're not familiar, conditional uses run with the land, not the user. So while the Montessori school in nineteen ninety four is the original, say, recipient or user of the conditional use permit, another user can come in and utilize that same conditional use permit. So that is what Ash Creek Play School has been doing since, I believe, twenty fifteen, but they can correct me if I get that wrong. And they are utilizing that existing nineteen ninety four conditional use permit. In two thousand, there was design review and a conditional use permit for the expansion of the church. To be clear, there was no change to the operations of the childcare facility through that review. There were no proposals to change operational characteristics, number of staff, number of students. It was purely focused on the church. However, decision makers, I believe, city council on appeal, placed a condition of approval requiring that separate conditional use approval be be obtained for an enrollment increase. The major modification of a conditional use applied for by Ash Creek is that conditional use, therefore they are following the procedures outlined in that conditional or in that condition of approval from the year two thousand. Planning Commission heard from applicants and the applicants and public testimony on both October ninth and October twenty third and determined that Beaverton Development Code forty fifteen fifteen four C five was not met and therefore denied the application. That appu- that approval criteria, I'm going to read it fully here because there's, there's a little bit going on there. The applicant must demonstrate that the location, size and functional characteristics of the proposal are such that it can be made reasonably compatible with and have minimal impact on livability and appropriate use and development of the properties in the surrounding area of the subject site. Planning Commission heard considerable testimony receiving or expressing concerns about the noise impacts. Planning Commission's decision was split. There were four voting commissioners. One voted. Um, there were four voting commissioners, one voted, um, in approval of the application and three voted, uh, to deny the application. Um, I want to draw a bit of a distinction between this application and the designer view compliance letter, uh, discussed previously. Um, this is a type-three application, um, with language that is broad and discretionary. You'll note in that, uh, approval criteria five at the top of the slide, um, that's pretty loose language. Um, there is room for interpretation there. Um, as opposed to the sign of your compliance letter where they're very clear and objective, functionally black and white approval criteria. This broad and discretionary approval criteria does allow council to reach a different conclusion, um, than Planning Commission if they do find that this, um, discretionary, uh, approval criteria in fact is met by the applicant's proposal. Um, touch a little bit on, uh, mitigation measures offered by the applicant. Some of these items, mitigation items were offered up to Planning Commission, and some of them have provided subsequent in the appeal. Uh, one of the mitigation offers, and all of these, the first to talk about how the outdoor play area is used. Um, the first mitigation measure offered is to limit the use of the play area by the childcare facility to three hours per day. Um, there are no current conditions of approval or other regulations limiting how much that play area is used throughout the day. Um, currently, Ash Creek Play School, if I recall correctly, operates between nine AM, one PM. Um, they could tomorrow operate between eight AM and five PM and have children outside the entire time. That would be completely permissible under the current regulations. Uh, the applicant is offering up to limit the hours of operator, the hours of use of that, um, of play area to three hours per day, um, which is a much stricter regulation than, uh, is, um, applied to them right now. The second mitigation offer, uh, measured, uh, by the applicant is to limit the use of the play area to twenty children at any given time. Um, currently, there is no limit on the number of children that can use a play area at any given time. Um, but we'll note that currently they are limited to twenty students, so twenty is the maximum they could do right now. Um, by providing this limitation, uh, the applicant can functionally mirror, uh, the conditions that are occurring right now um, and ensure that there would be no more than, um, the current allowable number of children out on the, on the playground at any given time uh, during their operations throughout the day. And finally, uh, the applicant offers, um, uh, third mitigation measure. Um, albeit one, I understand, is not their preference. I will let them speak to, uh, that a little bit more. Um, their original request was to go from twenty children to sixty children. Um, if in fact, city council determines that sixty children is not approvable, they have offered, um, a series of other numbers, uh, forty-two, forty-eight, forty-two, or thirty-four. These match with their operational characteristics and classroom size. Um, these would be, um, reasonable thresholds, uh, where they could still function with full classroom sizes. Um, um, and still meet the requirements. I can let Ash Creek, the applicant, speak to that a little bit more if they like. Um, but that is in, uh, uh, APP one point one, um, of the staff memo. Um, those, um, mitigation measures offered, um, staff has provided language that if city council deems it appropriate to, um, include those restrictions, um, these conditions of approval can be adopted, um, to ensure that those are met. Um, these have been repeated in the, in, um, different, uh, memos to date. Um, but they are laid out here. COA number three, limiting hours of playground use to three hours either consecutive or divided in shorter periods of time. Uh, COA four, outdoor area can only be used by twenty children at any given time. And then COA six, the childcare facility's daily attendance shall be limited to sixty children. Uh, council, uh, can amend that, as I mentioned before, if they feel like a certain, another number is more appropriate that can meet the approval criteria. Um, so that is up for council amendment. Um, the full list of conditions of approval recommended by staff have been consolidated into a memo dated, uh, December tenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, previously, they were kind of in a couple of different spots. Um, so they have been consolidated there in that memo for easy reference. Finally, I'd like to touch a little bit on noise regulations, both Beaverton Municipal Code and Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. Um, there is significant testimony regarding the municipal code, um, and its applicability. Um, there are exemptions and then municipal codes speaking to reasonable activities conducted on school playgrounds and public or private school grounds, conducted in accordance with the manner of which spaces are generally used. Uh, staff have and continue to interpret that childcare facilities without our play area have reasonably similar characteristics to a school playground or public, private, private school ground. Therefore, municipal code exemption five fifteen oh three five F is applicable here and that the outdoor play area for the, uh, childcare facility is exempt from certain municipal code requirements. Now, to be clear, that doesn't mean that someone can't, you know, shoot off an air horn at three in the morning. There are still limitations and requirements, especially between the hours of ten PM and seven AM. Um, but normal operations on school grounds during normal times are exempt. Um, I will also note that compliance with municipal code demonstrating it one way or the other is not an approval criteria, but it does help provide context, um, as to how our municipal code works, um, and applies to these types of uses. Uh, and second, I'll talk a little bit about the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. Um, there is a provision in chapter sixty that makes a blanket statement that speaks to, um, conformance with applicable uh, Oregon DEQ standards regarding noise impacts. Um, staff notes that there is a little bit of murkiness, um, about what rules apply and whether or not this use actually falls under, um, DEQ standards. Um, letters from both, uh, neighbors and the applicant, um, have competing statements about applicability. Uh, there is language in DEQ that speaks to uses that, um, operate with industry and commerce. Um, staff are not, um, experts, nor are we the authority administrators or enforcers of DEQ rules. Um, so there is a little bit of outstanding question about how much is applicable. Um, but there is, uh, there is language in our code that requires that compliance with DEQ noise, uh, noise standards are there. Um, so staff does recommend a condition of approval requiring compliance with any applicable DEQ noise regulations. To be clear, uh, whether or not this condition of approval is included in a decision, the DEQ standards that are applicable will still control in this situation. Um, and whether or not it's in our development code, uh, those can, those state level rules still do apply where applicable. Um, so staff acknowledges there's a little bit of murkiness here, um, and that this condition of approval is actually quite critical to include because it, uh, helps provide positive findings that the, um, regulations have been met regarding DEQ requirements. Uh, that concludes staff's presentation. Uh, staff recommends approval of Appeal APPC twenty twenty-four dash zero one zero five. Thereby reversing Planning Commission's decision to deny with the updated conditions of approval outlined in the December tenth memo um, as well as any conditions of approval modified or added by city council. Uh, that concludes staff's presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions, uh, the council may have.
Well, if I, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Oh, this thing freezes. Okay, thank you. Um, can I ask? Can you go back to the first couple of slides? I just wanna take a quick look.
Which, which slide in particular would be helpful for you?
Sorry, uh, one more ahead. Okay, next. I just wanna pause here for one, sorry. Okay. Okay, so, and then will you go to your last slide now?
Sure.
Um, so if I understand correctly, you are recommending these conditions of approval from the last few slides, correct?
That is correct. Now, there are three of the six on this slide. Um, the full list of conditions of approval, um, were included in a December tenth memo. Uh, it was provided to the city recorder on two forty-five, so you probably would have gotten it, um, sometime in, in the late afternoon.
Okay, and then, um, can you go one slide forward? Is it common when we go through these application processes for childcare facilities to, to go this deep in noise?
Or is it? Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there. Um, typically not, and, um, I'll, just for context, I've, um, been a planner with the City Beaverton for almost twelve years. This is, uh, I, I cannot recall a time where, uh, DEQ regulations, uh, were required, uh, to provide findings. Um, it has been treated kind of as a general blanket statement, uh, noting that DEQ rules hold. They would hold whether or not that code provision was in there. Staff has recommended this condition of approval because it has been raised, um, by a neighbor, uh, in public comment. Um, so we believe it is important in cases does, if, if the decision does get appealed to a little bit one way or another, that findings are provided demonstrating, um, that we have responded to that, um, regulation and that condition of approval, um, is there to help provide affirmative findings.
Okay, can you go to that last slide again? Um, because I have so many documents in front of me, you said there's supplemental memo. Is it part of what was in today, in the meeting today, or would that be somewhere else?
And that you're asking about the full list of conditions of approval?
Yes.
So, um, that was a, that was a supplemental memo. Let me, I could just actually share that.
And if somebody else knows that's listening, sorry, I just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right thing.
Totally understandable, and, and there have been, I believe there were total of three supplemental memos on this one, so yeah, I can understand it's a little bit hard to, uh, keep track of. Okay. Uh, let me share my screen here again. Now that I've done driving around, I don't wanna make people, oh, I should probably stop sharing my old one. That would help. Okay. Let's try this. All right, okay, so this is what the top, the front page, uh, dated December tenth. Um, listed under additional appellate materials, and the full conditions recommended by staff are on page two. Uh, you can see conditions of approval three, four, and six. Uh, those are ones covered on that page there regarding, um, hours per day used by the childcare facility. I could make it a little bit bigger, actually. Um, number of students allowed at any given time, compliance with DEQ regulations, number five, that's the last item I talked about. And the number of children allowed in daily attendance. Sixty is, is the request, um, from the applicant. Of course, I mentioned that there are, um, some potential lower numbers if, I mean, or excuse me, if city council determines that, um, sixty children could not be the approval criteria.
Okay, and so based on what you're proposing that we approve, you are allowing for the sixty children, correct?
The recommendation by staff is that the proposal of to increase of sixty children with the conditions of approval, um, shared on the screen, does meet the approval criteria. If council determines that sixty is not the appropriate number, there are lower numbers, again, again, I'll let the applicant speak to that a little bit. Um, if they're somewhere between twenty and sixty, um, but based on the facts, um, and based on the mitigation measures outlined in these conditions of approval, uh, staff is recommending, um, approval of the appeal and to allow, uh, the sixty children daily attendance with the conditions as shown.
Okay, those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Of course.
Commissioner Peter?
Thanks, Steve. Good to see you again.
You as well.
So I'm curious, is this, um, is it common for other small daycares or play schools to have this type of restriction on their outdoor play structures?
Um, it, it's, it's really contextual and, and really that's what the conditional use permit is. It's that compatibility test and how well it fits the neighborhood. Um, I, I, I cannot point to another one off the top of my head that has this level of restrictions. Um, but when we do hear from neighbors about concerns about noise impacts, um, there is that broad discretion, uh, for council to be able to apply conditions as they deem appropriate to make sure that, um, those mitigation, uh, preceded that, the impacts can be minimized and, you know, that the use is reasonably compatible with the neighborhood. Um, some childcare facilities or industrial facilities where there aren't neighbors that are worried about noise. Uh, some are, um, and so really, because they're, that's one of the reasons we have the conditional use permit is to look at things on a case-by-case basis instead of just outright permitting them. Um, they can be considered, uh, with a little bit more, say, discretion or nuance and whether or not conditions of approval like these, um, are warranted.
Okay, and then I have a follow-up. Figure out in my, in my head, but I need to sort through it some more, so thank you. I might come back to it.
Of course.
Commissioner Duggar?
Um, I think, I think my question is, the original conditional use permit for the Montessori school that Ash Creek is using allow for twenty students and two staff. But I'm not seeing any changes in staff with this new, so is it gonna remain two staff members, or do we need to address that?
That's an excellent question. So, uh, let me speak to condition of approval two. I think you guys are still seeing that. Okay. Um, so condition of approval here too reads all preceding conditions of approval remain in effect except for condition of approval three from Land Use CUP, which will be superseded by this decision. Condition of approval three in that nineteen ninety-four approval is the condition that speaks to twenty students, two staff, and seven hundred square feet of building. Um, it is staff's opinion that regulating the number of staff is not practical. Um, there are changes in best practices, student-teacher ratio, um, and really is not the driving factor here about impact. Um, same goes for the space used by the school, or i- i- in the, in the church itself. Um, use inside the church, um, we've heard no complaints about people hearing kids from inside the school. Um, that is, uh, by staff's opinion, not a critical thing, um, to regulate and not really a challenge in meeting the approval criteria, truly is the number of students allowed. Um, so those regulations of twenty students, two staff, and seven hundred square feet would be struck and replaced by condition of approval six. And the number of staff and the square footage used would be, uh, would not be controlled here and have flexibility um, for the practical applications of managing sixty children in a childcare facility.
Cool, thank you. Answered my question. Appreciate that.
Of course.
Uh, Commissioner Peter?
Okay, thanks. Okay, I've sorted it out a little bit. Um, you said these conditions of approval here on the screen right now, these are put forth by the school or from you all as staff?
So it's kind of a combination, um, staff-prepared conditions of approval under the initial staff report. Those were only conditions of approval one and two. Um, the use of the play area duration, number of students out there at any given time. Staff did not believe that they were necessary, therefore did not include them for Planning Commission. As this comes under appeal, um, the appellant has offered up these mitigating factors. Um, staff wrote initial conditions of approval in their November, November twenty-sixth memo. Um, but the applicant had a couple of tweaks that staff agree with. Um, the biggest one was originally, um, condition of approval four said thirty children at any given time. Um, the applicant has said, no, we would actually like to reduce that to twenty. Um, so they've actually added a bigger restriction than staff originally had placed. Um, so that was the big kind of tweak from the applicant, but the rest of these, um, are, are mostly from staff, yes.
Okay, got it. So then I've got one final question. Um, I, I think I'm just struggling to understand why we need such detailed regulations around when kids can play on a playground, when we have a, a noise ordinance. How does our noise ordinance interact with excessive noise? And why would we need conditions of approval if we've got noise ordinance?
Uh, that's a good question. Um, so a- a- as I mentioned before, um, we do have a noise ordinance and there are exemptions that speak to reasonable use of school grounds and that our interpretation is that um, a childcare facility and stuff like this is similar enough to where it applies. Um, there are rules about, you know, no, essentially not really much any noise at all in a residential area between ten PM and seven AM. Um, but again, the municipal code is just one set of controlling rules um, and is not actually part of the approval criteria. Um, the, um, approval criteria I had, um, on the screen before, speaking about reasonable compatibility and minimal impact, um, could be interpreted to be a higher threshold than what's required in the municipal code. Um, so it is completely appropriate, if the council deems appropriate, um, to apply more stringent noise mitigation measures, um, than found in the municipal code.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's helpful. That's all I've got.
So there seems, uh, no more questions. Um, now it's time for the applicant's presentation. Applicant, you have ten minutes to present.
Thank you, everyone, for bearing through it this with us. Ash Creek is the applicant in this process with the full support of the property owners, Murray Hills Christian Church. Daniel, can you just, I'm going to blow through this quickly since I only have two minutes, so slide two. While legally unaffiliated with Ash Creek, besides having a tenant and landlord relationship, Murray Hills believes that having Ash Creek operate on their property is aligned with their goals of supporting education. Next slide. Ash Creek was established in twenty fifteen, so family participation is an integrable integral part of our program, including having caregivers rotate through as assistant teachers in the classrooms. The school is run by volunteer board members and is a five oh one C three nonprofit. We've grown from one class to now three classes with two of them having waitlists. Okay, next slide. Murray Hills seemed like the perfect location for our preschool because it's located halfway between two existing co-ops, Tiger Play School and Cedar Hills. This location has been excellent. Over the years, we've had some members who lived in this nearby neighborhood and could walk to school. We have families with grandparents in the neighborhood who chose in this school because of their proximity to them. The existence of this playground as a park open to the public is hugely beneficial for the neighborhood as we've stated before relating the comp plan goal three point eight point one. Policy G, next slide. Originally, when we landed at Murray Hills, we didn't know anything about the terms of the nineteen ninety-four CUP. We didn't even realize such a thing existed or was needed for our operations. The current trustees became aware of this in twenty twenty-one, and Ash Creek volunteered to lead the process of this major major modification to the CUP with the full support of the property owners, Murray Hills Christian Church, through the whole process. We created this application for sixty students to give us the flexibility to grow into the future in case this was in place for thirty years like the previous one has been. We were not expecting this level of concern about the growth of our school. So that's why we've kind of worked with the city to propose some conditions that could just make this more acceptable, hopefully to the neighborhood. Next slide, or is this again to me? Okay, so fundamentally, we just, we think this improves livability. And so we are, you know, appreciating this opportunity to reconsider. I'm going to turn it over to Daniel. Apologize for rushing. We thought we had fifteen minutes. So, okay, Daniel.
Thank you, Jenna, and good evening, city councilors. My name is Daniel Hauser. I'm the treasurer at Ash Creek Play School, and I have two children who play and learn at Ash Creek. Some of you may see this in your everyday life, the neighbor, friend, or coworker who struggles to find affordable, high-quality childcare in Beaverton. And that experience is backed up by the data. Washington County is a childcare desert for kids zero to five, meaning there's only one spot for every three kids. And there are significant shortages in general, let alone for affordable, high-quality experiences like Ash Creek provides today. And livability in Beaverton depends on people being able to raise their families here, and additional childcare slots would improve people's livability. The impacts of the childcare shortage in our community are dire. According to a recent survey of Oregon parents, more than four in ten said difficulty finding care forced them to quit a job or turn down employment opportunities. Another study found that this total is a one point four billion with a B in annual economic losses across Oregon. The prior survey found that families with children in need of special education support are even more likely to face employment impacts. And Ash Creek has helped many children and families flourish and grow in our community. One letter of support in the record by a group of special education providers who serve schools all over our community notes that the environment that Ash Creek Play School provides is unique and beneficial to students with and without disabilities and is a perfect example of how inclusive environments benefit all in the community. It would be a loss to our students in the broader community if this preschool were to close. So in our presentation to the commission, the planning commission, we laid out how we align with the comprehensive plans, major themes, and that presentation's in the record. Today, I'll focus on the only thing the commission cited in their denial of our application, livability. So definition of livability in the comp plan, it includes educational opportunity, it includes economic prosperity. Educating and engaging our next generation is exactly the kind of land use envisioned in the plan and is an obvious fit. A thriving economy in Beaverton depends on parents being able to work. And that means our children who are not yet old enough for public schools need somewhere safe and nurturing. Another part of the comp plan calls for integration of schools into neighborhoods. That must be considered when looking at whether the sound of children playing is reasonably compatible with and have a minimal impact on the appropriate use of the surrounding area under approval criterion C five. That is, when the city decided to allow schools, they directed them to be located in neighborhoods to better serve those communities. The city made a policy judgment to integrate schools into neighborhoods. So allowing neighbors to stop schools now because they do not like hearing children playing is contrary to this policy judgment. I can assure you, as a group of parent volunteers, we know our kids can be noisy when they're playing and having fun. I can't imagine anyone thinking it would be a good outcome for children in our community to be silent and docile when they're playing outside. I'm going to highlight a few things from a sound study conducted in twenty twenty-two by Benjamin Wolf, a board certified acoustic consultant. He visited Ash Creek and took sound studies, uh, sound readings from a variety of locations surrounding the playground and near neighboring homes. The full study is in the record, and within it, the noise readings of children playing were, and I quote, significantly quieter than the limits set by the state. So here's a map of the church. You'll look familiar. This is probably the eighth version you've seen tonight. The northwest point circled is where the readings I'm going to refer to next are, and the kind of the reference dot is roughly kind of the westernmost edge of our playground. So this is again the closest point to the playground and the labels indicate why there were spikes, including traffic, birds, planes, idling trucks, the playground, the red blocked periods, those are when children were outside. And so you can see that in many cases a bird, a plane, uh, you know, these were causes for spikes in noise, just as it was true that there are cases with the playground did increase increase spikes in noise as well. That said, we do understand that some neighbors don't enjoy the sounds of children playing, reaching their homes or their decks. And we've taken and will take additional steps to the best and to be the best neighbors we can. We've made the facility more conscious of noise by installing a new fence and gate. And we've committed to adding signage as appropriate and planting more native plants between the playground and neighboring properties, which will provide some sound mitigation. However, just yesterday, opponents of the school submitted an additional noise study. Though they did not give us volunteer parents much time to review it, the study appears to be opaque, failing to identify if the recorded noise is from a truck or a plane like our study identified or from children playing. The new study also blends data from multiple years and noise from causes other than children playing that could be misleading. And in fact, one part of the study really stood out to me. It said the sound radiating from a single child can sometimes dominate the sound from others. Yes, that's certainly true. But are we to determine our policy for admitting and expelling students because they might be noisier? Is that the kind of community we want Beaverton to be? And this raises the question, which is really the crux of a lot of this for y'all, is what's the measure by which you're being asked to decide what is too much noise, right? And as noted by city staff, the Beaverton noise ordinance is not applicable to a playground being used for preschool. Our understanding and and that of staff is that DEQ noise regulations are also unlikely to apply. So it makes sense that noise regulations do not apply to playgrounds precisely because sometimes children playing are noisy, right? But as a policy matter, we as a society have decided that playgrounds are important, right? That schools are important, and there is no precise measurement that can regulate that policy balance for you all. And for those reasons, a noise measurement is not the approval criteria for the preschool, and it can't legally legally be the cause for denying the application. Instead, the condition, the approval criterion it issued here, C five, is whether the sound of children playing is reasonably compatible with and have a minimal impact on the appropriate use of the surrounding area. So we're asking city council tonight to draw the line for what is too much in the policy balance by imposing some conditions of approval that will limit the outdoor activity levels at the school to those that are already allowed by our current permit. It's important to note that due to Zoom issues in the planning commission meetings, including city staff accidentally closing the first meeting, and then we ended up having to have a second meeting and chaos ensued. We, we didn't really have the chance to provide conditions of approval that the planning commission couldn't consider and address during those initial proceedings, especially ones that already sets our limits at levels that are allowed by our current permit. And this is a problem the city council can now address. The current permit allows twenty children outside without practical time limits, or as city staff highlighted, we can operate from eight to five with children playing outside, twenty kids outside the whole time, and we would be in compliance. So what we are asking for is actually less than that. Keep in mind, the only stated cause for denial by the planning commission was concerns about noise impacting livability under approval criteria C five. So that said, we would welcome conditions of approval. You know, I I hadn't expected that Steve would do such a great job going through the conditions of approval. So I will just quickly note that like around three hour limits, we are, you know, what we would welcome. Around applying with any applicable DEQ regulations, we would welcome. I think limiting it to twenty children outside at any given time. If that's necessary for the approval to go, you know, with twenty instead of thirty or a higher level, then we would also accept that that limit to do to it as well. And finally, and and our least favorite is if we needed to limit the daily attendance that we could ever expand to without going through another twenty thousand dollar process before this planning commission and the and the city council. Then we would, we would accept lower limits on our total children who are present. So to conclude, Beaverton desperately needs high-quality, affordable childcare slots and which we provide and could expand with approval, improving livability in the community. We have met the conditional use permit approval criteria, and that is clearly stated in the record by staff in our original applications. And we align well with the neighborhood livability and integration of schools in the comp plan. We remain exempt from local and state sound regulations, but even then, we're below the state levels. And regardless, city council doesn't need to decide tonight if we're exempt, you can use the condition of approval. And although staff originally recommended approval without conditions.
You said it at the time.
All right. Thank you so much. Please approve this appeal, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? Let's see, okay, Counselor Teter?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Daniel and Jenna. Jenna mentioned something in the in her part of it was about the the request for sixty kids was part of an intentional plan to look ahead, not an immediate change to have sixty kids. Can you talk more? Is there a timeline for growing daycare? Can you talk more about that?
Um, frankly, oh, there's no defined timeline for growing to sixty. Right now, I think the immediate short-term operations would be thirty-four. That's our near term goal. Sixty, I think, was the the I I'm sorry, I forget. There was something if we went beyond sixty students plus the anticipated ten adults that were associated with that, seventy total people. I think that triggered some other review that was needed for like the building fire life safety. So that's kind of where we got to that upper threshold for what we thought we could easily apply for. And we just wanted to maximize that number because like Daniel mentioned, this was a very expensive, very difficult, time-consuming process. So we just want that limit to be as high as possible for both Ash Creek, but also Murray Hills. You know, they are, we, they are going to be the permit holders, not us. So this just gives them kind of flexibility going into the future for as long as Ash Creek or other child carries on the site. But no, we don't have a defined timeline of when we would ever hit the sixty, so.
Counselor Teter, if I can expand a little bit, right now, we have two classes that are in place at Ash Creek. A younger class around two to three-year-old, a middle-aged class around three to five. And we actually previously before this whole permitting situation exploded in front of us. We had a third class there, which was our our transitional kindergarten, really this age group around, you know, four, five, six for kids that are are ready and in a place where they can start handling a little bit more intensive curriculum. Those three groups, if they were all like max enrollment, would be thirty-four kids. And that's kind of where we were shooting for this year. Because of the needing to revert back to the original conditional use permit, we only have twenty kids in place at Ash Creek at Murray Hills Christian Church today. And our our transitional kind of our older age group is actually at Conestoga Rec Center. So speaking of added cost, we get the joy of two rents over the last few months. But I will say that we would love to just bring that class back in in the short term, right? I think right now our goal, we want to bring the whole Ash Creek family together at Murray Hills Christian Church again. That's our immediate goal. We have waitlists, like we would like to in the long term be able to expand, but like the ideas around hiring a teacher and enrolling kids and getting a new room prepped, I mean, that's hard for me to imagine it would happen in in the current school year.
Okay, thank you. Um, I ask because I'm not sure what testimony we'll get later on, but I think there could be some fear that there immediately be a dramatic change in in the use of the property, but it doesn't sound like that. It sounds like if there is change, it'll happen over time as the community grows along with it. Um, I've got one more question. Do you, in an ideal outcome for you all, do you all want the, want these tighter restrictions or are you trying to, are you proposing them in hopes that it makes it easier for you all to get approved? I'm just trying to get a feel for where your goals are.
The the second one, I mean, we don't, we sure would make our lives easier if there were no restrictions. That would be great. But if the city council feels like those are needed to find some middle ground or get comfortable with approval, we're willing to accept them. I mean, we, it's a, it's a compromise we're willing to like negotiate and put forth in order to get approval of our original application and approval of this appeal. So it's it's definitely the second
Okay, thank you.
Option there.
Thank you. That's all I've got.
Counselor Hassan?
Yeah, I think my question's a little bit similar to Counselor Teter's. Like I'm thinking, I took a screenshot of, you know, the memo that Stephen had put together with the conditions, like what is your, you know, like, what is something that you love, just, you know what I mean, like where where are you on those six? If, like, very briefly, or if there's some, any comments that you want us to know about those six?
Yeah, I'll say that, and thank you for the question, Counselor Hassan. I think the complying with applicable DEQ noise regulations, which I believe is true for our current operations anyway. If if they apply to us, we'd have to comply. Sure, like, that's totally fine, like obey the law, sure. I think a limit at sixty, right, that one. Like, we know that was part of our application. That's certainly our intent that we would not be in excess of sixty in this conditional use approval, definitely. I think the limiting of the time and limiting of the number of kids outside at any one point in time. I mean, I think it's fair to have those limits. I think the more flexible they can be, the better because it allows the teachers in our school, right, the families in our school to figure out what works best for their curriculum, for their day. They might have, you know, the fire truck coming to visit or something like that from Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue. It'd be nice if they could have an extra half hour outside to like with the firemen or something, you know, like having flexibility by having looser restrictions on the hours and the number of kids that can be outside at once would be nice, right? But if that's what it takes for us to be able to bring our family back from Conestoga, bring all of our kids together, then we'll accept that too.
Thank you.
All right. Now it's time for testimony in support of the appeal. The recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak in support?
Yes, we have about twenty on the list I sent this afternoon. Michael Mundy. Jessica's going to look to see if they are online still, and if they're not, then we'll go to the end of the list and then come back.
Yes, I I have a raised hand feature. So I'm gonna, should I go down the list?
Yeah, that's why I was calling for Michael Mundy. Okay, he's not raising his hand. Travis Gothard? It's going to take a minute. We have about seventy-five people online. Emily Gothard, is Travis with you? Okay, we're going to promote Emily Gothard. This may be Travis as well. They're together.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, you have three minutes to address the council. You just unmute it, mute the mic?
Counselor President.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can we make sure you share your name and address and can we make sure Senator Campos is up next? Sorry, thank you.
Absolutely, no problem. I'm Travis Gothard, two zero three seven zero Southwest Lila Lane in Aloha. And I am a proud parent at Ash Creek Play School. My oldest was there for the summer session, and my youngest attends currently in the Rose Room. And I would like to just echo what Daniel said. I think that he did a very succinct and good job of outlining what our plans are. There is a childcare desert. We actually do not live in the neighborhood. My family travels twenty minutes from Aloha because of the dearth of childcare in our area. And and so in our community, I don't think that any of the restrictions that we would put actually even apply just because we've been in compliance the entire time. We do do our best to make sure that the noise of children playing. the noise of children playing is, you know, kept to a normal level. And I believe that the advantages to the community, like I said, I travel in, I bring money when I come. I spend money in the year in that neighborhood because my kid goes there. That's a small bolster, but it it does add to the bottom line of the cap of Beaverton. The second thing is livability as far as noise concerns go. I mean, there's, there, there are children playing, but a leaf blower causes the same amount of noise and for approximately the same amount of time. So I don't think that it would negatively impact the livability if I live next to a a full blown elementary school in Aloha. It's, I'm just very, very close about a block away. And I hear them, there are hundreds of children playing all the time and it is absolutely bedlam most of the time, but it doesn't affect the livability of my neighborhood. In fact, we welcome it. In fact, the neighborhood children that we have, they're outside, they're playing constantly. It does not affect the livability of my house. I do leave the windows open, I, in the summertime. And I think that having a vibrant and safe and effective childcare option for everyone in the community can only add to livability in the future. Neighbors come and go, houses come and go on, and as I said, like, noise is one of the lesser concerns. It is a concern and we want to be sensitive to that. But I think that overall, like, having really, really well rounded citizens that know how to play well with each other is far more valuable than any kind of noise restriction. Thank you very much. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Is there any questions of speaker?
Council President, I do have a quick comment. We are just gonna go down the list of proponents and if someone maybe doesn't have their full name listed, or I see some people just have their phones listed on here. People will get a chance to speak at the end. So if you're not given permission to speak and you're on the list, we'll go through the end and you'll be given permission to speak later on.
Hello?
All right, please state your full name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Rice and I live at one six two five seven Southwest Brentwood Way in Beaverton, Oregon. I encourage the city council to approve the conditional use permit appeal and allow Ash Creek Play School to grow to meet the demand of families all across the city for affordable and high quality childcare. We cannot have a livable community without the ability to care and raise, care for and raise our children here. The US Attorney General, Dr. Vivek Murthy, stated that parenting is considered a public health threat. To quote Dr. Murthy, nearly half of parents are saying that most days they feel completely overwhelmed by stress. The other thing that's important to recognize is parents are also struggling with disproportionate levels of loneliness and isolation. About sixty five percent of parents say they're lonely, and that includes over seventy five percent of single parents. I can speak to this loneliness. As my husband was a frontline worker during the COVID nineteen pandemic, my two year old and newborn were almost always isolated with me. I was on antidepressants and I was fighting to get through every day parenting solo while my husband often worked eighty hour work weeks on night shifts. I struggled through every day and I was told that I couldn't take my children to therapy. I had no one to help me with them and we still, we, and we still don't have any family support. That all changed one day when I met a mom at a park who mentioned Ash Creek Play School. She described a co op preschool model that was affordable and allowed me to speak with other adults during the day. I can confidently say that I have found the community I so desperately needed. Some days we all cry together, some days we help with childcare for other struggling families. Some days we sit at a play date together because the day feels so overwhelming to do alone. I don't know what I would do without the families and community I have founded Ash Creek. To deny our appeal is to take away community and education opportunities from families that may not otherwise have access to it. Dozens of families who could join Ash Creek would be turned away or left on the waiting list indefinitely. But even worse are the families already a part of the school that would, we would need to leave out or to find a new school and a new community to raise their children in. The Beaverton City Council has stated that one of their goals is to solve the childcare desert problem in their district. Denial of this appeal would be a step away from achieving these goals and a repudiation of the needs young families face in our community. It would be a rejection of the needs of low income and marginalized families who want a livable community where they can raise their children without having to drive across Portland to access care. With playgrounds comes noise, however, under the new conditional use permit, we would be outside for at most three hours a day between nine and one. And that's well within city noise and quiet time hours. We cannot ask our children to grow up to have a strong voice in their communities while also asking them to be seen but not heard. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Is there any questions of the speaker? None?
Hello, this is Matt Sprecher, one three one five five Southwest Thatcher Drive in Beaverton. I'm speaking to implore you to approve the appeal of conditional use permit requested by Ash Creek. My daughter started going to Ash Creek for the first time this year. She was a baby that was born during the heat of COVID. And it was imperative to us that we find the right school for our daughter to grow educationally and socially so that she can be a great member in not just our city, our state, our country, but also of the world. And finding the right place is very difficult, given the limited options in our city and our county. But and also the wait lists that are involved with it, but also we feel extremely lucky to have found Ash Creek. And that's why I'm here today. Honestly, let's call a spade a spade. Preschool options in Beaverton are few and far between. That's just how it is. I'm gonna talk about a few numbers here and there. If you want more details of it, please let me know and I'll break it down a little bit more. It was talked about a little bit before, but currently there are somewhere between thirty to forty licensed childcare and preschool facilities that are in Beaverton. That may sound like a lot, but considering the population growth of Beaverton and Washington County, that puts the average school size of children the average school size of children that need preschool at somewhere between seventy and a hundred per school, depending on the total number of preschools. Ash Creek is asking for a minimum of thirty four total kids across their three classes, a minimum. Based off that average, that's at least forty one kids that who could use services in Beaverton. Extrapolating off of that, if we take Ash Creek as one of the numbers with thirty four and apply that to the forty preschools that are licensed, that leaves approximately eighteen hundred and fifty children in Beaverton who are fighting for a spot to learn and to be prepared for their next step of education in life. Now emotions, they may make the most noise, but numbers speak the truth. We need preschool options in Beaverton and in Washington County, that's a fact. If people think that Beaverton is an isolated city and the rest of Washington County has an abundance of preschool and childcare options, that's just not true. My wife and I are a dual income family so that we can give the best life opportunity for our daughter as a majority of people are these days. Having that opportunity to provide for our daughter that chance, that is the biggest thing in our lives right now. Ash Creek is a community. We come together and we work together. And I just want to close with this. Every person in this room has one thing in common. We were kids at one point. Some might, some might have kids. If we put ourselves in the shoes of our kids and these kids and we were told, you can't go to school today because there is no longer a place to go, it would be crushing. My daughter wakes up every single day excited to see her friends and her teachers. Don't take that away from her. Don't take that away from the rest of these kids and don't squash the joy of these children. And to quote Proverbs twenty two six, since we're at a church, train up a child in the way they should go. And when they are old, they will not depart from it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Emma?
Hi. My name is Emma Aglape and I live at three seven two five Southwest Pasadena Street, Portland, Oregon nine seven two one nine. I am a parent of a student at Ash Creek Play School. And we made the decision to send our five year old to Transitional Kindergarten at Ash Creek. We chose Ash Creek because of the play, the co op model, which allowed us to be actively involved in our child's education. Thus far in the school year, Zoe has received a wonderful education. Her teacher Dulce is very caring and dedicated to ensuring all of her students are thriving. I personally love being able to parent teach once a week and witness my child's learning and growth. However, the inability to have my daughter's class be on the main Murray Hills Christian Church campus has created a hardship for my family. We planned on enrolling our two year old in Ash Creek as well. Unfortunately, due to the denial of the land use permit, our five year olds class has been forced to hold class at the Conestoga Rec Center. So unfortunately, our two year old is not able to attend school with her sister. Meanwhile, my five year old's teacher Dulce has been setting up a classroom and taking down a classroom every single school day. It's a testament to her hard work that the students are still thriving and loving school. I can only imagine how successful their school year will be once she is able to use that time to lesson plan and prepare materials rather than pack everything needed to learn in her car every day. I am a teacher at a private school for children with autism. I truly understand how important early childhood education is. As an educator myself, I strongly believe good schools and teachers are a tremendous asset to communities and should be supported and uplifted in order to benefit all community members. Ash, Ash Creek has been valuable to my family and many more in the Beaverton area. Ash Creek seems to have met the approval criteria. Please approve the appeal and reverse the planning commission's decision on the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Brittany Thompson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Brittany Thompson. I live at one zero three one five Southwest one hundred fifty second Avenue. Our house is less than a five minute walk to the Murray Hills Christian Church Playground. I say it that way because when we bought our house about one and a half years ago, we knew that there was a playground at the church. The preschool was a surprise. The first time I heard the children all laughing and playing, I was honestly very relieved. I have a three year old and an eight month old, but most of my immediate neighbors are retired and have grown children. So hearing that there were children nearby made me feel immediately better about this neighborhood. I know that there's been a lot of opposition and it seems like there aren't very many people close by that appreciate that the playground and the preschool are there. But I do, and I actually have a lot of my immediate neighbors that appreciate it as well. My neighbors across the street bring their grandchildren there to play. There are two young families just up the street from me who play there and would have considered Ash Creek as a preschool option if there was space there. Whenever I talk about Ash Creek and the playground and the school and the church to my neighbors, the consensus is positive. One of my older neighbors was talking recently about how wonderful it is to hear the children playing close by again because they miss the sound of the children's laughter. Their kiddos moved out, you know, almost two decades ago and they they like hearing children play. I also would like to note that there are more and more young families buying in this area for which a nearby preschool and playground would be a huge draw. I know of three houses for sale in this neighborhood right now within a one mile radius. Not to mention four or five that are sold in this or surrounding neighborhoods within the last year. More family homes selling means more children in the neighborhood. I know that the sound of children can be disruptive, but it's important to remember that children are part of the community and they have the right to play and enjoy their neighborhood just as much as everybody else does. Having a playground and a preschool increases the livability of this neighborhood for anybody with young children. Not just young children, all children. So for the sake of this ever changing neighborhood, the children who live here now and the children who will live here probably in the very nearby future, please approve Ash Creek's appeal and reverse the planning commission's decision on the conditional use permit. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Miriam Del Greco.
Thank you. I'm Miriam Del Greco. My address is one six four six eight Southwest Horseshoe Way in Beaverton. Thank you for your time tonight. This is my third school year at Ash Creek Play School. As a parent, I am also the co president of our school board. The past several years at Ash Creek have been life changing. My family has made lifelong friends. I feel so lucky to have a high quality community focused preschool right here in our neighborhood. The close proximity to our house allows my husband to pick up our children at one o'clock during his lunch break. The location of Ash Creek lets our children go to school in the morning, then spend the afternoons at home with family. The other childcare facilities in our area are much more expensive and are far, are for full daycare. Ash Creek is unique and that provides half daycare, flexible schedules, and it's affordable. We have also appreciated the inviting nature of Ash Creek for students with special needs. Both my children have received services from Northwest Regional Education Services District at Ash Creek. The speech therapists and physical therapists work with the Ash Creek teachers to support the needs of the students. The therapist from Northwest Regional always comment to me about how inclusive, supportive and welcoming Ash Creek is. The current cap of twenty students does not provide enough spots for children in our community. We currently have a waitlist of families who want to be a part of our inclusive community. Our Zalia Transitional Kindergarten class has been operating out of Conestoga Rec Center this year because we do not have the space for the class with our current permit. The reason cited for not allowing our conditional use permit was playground noise. There was not concern about the number of children inside the building. Children in our area local community are having their early childhood education compromised by not allowing them to learn in the current vacant classrooms inside Murray Hills Christian Church. The church has the space available, Ash Creek has the quality teachers and our community has children needing quality early childhood education. I hope to one day tell my children the heartfelt story of how their mom alongside the incredible Ash Creek community came together after bedtime for more than a year of learning conditional land use permits, sound ordinances and vegetation management, so many things about what ferns to plant where, all fueled by a shared passion to protect their preschool. This wasn't just about saving a building, it was about protecting their right to quality education on our community. And maybe even one day my children's children will benefit from this. Please approve the appeal and reverse the planning commission decision on the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Caitlin Crawford.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Caitlin Crawford Jensen. I live at one three two five seven Southwest one hundred fifty seventh Avenue. I'm the mother of an eight year old, a five year old and a three year old in the Beaverton School District. Tonight I'm here to ask for your support in approving the appeal of Ash Creek Play School's conditional use permit. This decision is not just about one school, it's about the future of our city and the well being of our children. My husband and I both grew up in the southwest suburbs of Portland and have a deep attachment to this area. When we chose to buy our family home in Beaverton, we were drawn to everything the city had to offer. Good schools, beautiful parks and a growing infrastructure. But as we settled in, we quickly realized a challenge that many other families also face. There is a severe shortage of high quality early childhood education options in our area. The lack of nearby choices. The lack of nearby choices forced us to send our children to school outside the city, spending up to an hour each day on drop off and pickup. As parents, that's a huge sacrifice of valuable time. Unfortunately, the school our children attended closed in two thousand twenty-three due to lasting effects of the COVID nineteen pandemic, and we were once again scrambling to find a suitable preschool. It was then that we discovered Ash Creek Play School. Finally, we had a local option that was both convenient and enriching for our children. Ash Creek offers a place where our kids can learn and grow alongside their neighbors, and it offers parents a village of tangible support and the unique ability to be directly supporting our children's education. Ash Creek Play School is more than just a school, it's an essential resource for our city and an incredible example of community strength. Beaverton has experienced significant growth over the past thirty years, and with that growth comes an unavoidable increase in noise. We hear the sounds of construction, the hum of traffic, and the persistent interruptions from lawn mowers, leaf blowers, delivery trucks, and barking dogs. We accept the sounds of sirens and car alarms as part of daily life in a growing city. But amid this chorus, the most joyful and unobtrusive sound is the laughter and excitement of children at play. The voices of students during recess on a weekday morning are not a burden. They're a sign of a healthy, thriving community and a reminder that we are nurturing the next generation. Ash Creek Play School is not seeking to expand dramatically or draw in a large influx of people from outside the neighborhood. The school's mission is simple, to serve a small group of local families and support the children who will shape the future of the city. By approving this appeal, we are ensuring that Beaverton families don't have to choose between the convenience of local education and the quality of care. We're helping our city remain a place where families can thrive and neighbors can truly connect. We're making a decision that supports the greater good of our city and strengthens its resources for the long term. Ash Creek has clearly met the requirements for this conditional use permit, and I urge you to vote in the favor of their appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy Agron.
Thank you. Thank you staff for putting in so much time and council members. We really appreciate your time going into this. My name is Wendy Agron. I live at one zero five two zero southwest Shearwater Place. I'm the proud grandparent and advocate for Ash Creek Play School. When my granddaughter was ready for preschool, I suggested to my daughter to check out a co-op preschool. We had sent our children to a co-op preschool years ago, and I knew it was a special experience for the whole family. The experiences, friendships, and memories from those days are still cherished. We couldn't believe our good fortune to find a co-op walking distance from our home. My daughter, who is a teacher with degrees in early childhood education and curriculum, checked out Ash Creek Play School and felt at home. Both of my grandchildren have had the privilege of attending this incredible preschool, and I can't overstate the positive impact it has had on their development. The phrase "it takes a village" really holds true. Ash Creek is the cornerstone of that village. Ash Creek Preschool is more than just a preschool. The warm nurturing environment fosters not only academic learning, but also social and emotional growth, which is essential during these formative years. The educators at Ash Creek are dedicated professionals who are deeply, who care deeply about the wellbeing of every child, creating a space where their kids feel, uh, it's feel safe, supported, and inspired. The other parents become a second family and support the system for all. Expanding Ash Creek Play Schools enrollment capacity would help meet the growing demand of accessibility, quality, early childhood, and education in our neighborhood. I live near Nancy Riles Elementary School. Like the preschool, the times of, of activity during the day are predictable. If I can avoid going out during drop off and pickup, I do. The voices of children playing are a light of, are a blessing in life. It is more enjoyable than other routine noises such as lawn mowers and leaf blowers that I may hear also during the day. People in suburban areas often live by schools and they just need to get with it. I urge the council to consider the needs of the families like ours and support Ash Creek Play Schools' request to enroll more students. By doing so, you'll be investing in the future of our community and ensuring that our children have the opportunity to thrive. Thank you for your time. Please approve the appeal and reverse the planning commission's decision on the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Gothard.
Hi, my name is Emily Gothard. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, two zero three seven zero southwest Lila Lane, Beaverton, Oregon nine seven zero zero three. I am here today to ask that you approve the appeal of the conditional use permit requested by the nonprofit Ash Creek Play School. My children have attended Ash Creek Play School since two thousand twenty-two. I work full time and my husband is a stay at home dad. Our options for affordable preschool on a single income were extremely limited, and I am so grateful that my kids have had the opportunity to attend Ash Creek. Beaverton needs to encourage the ability of affordable preschools to operate and expand in our community to meet the needs of children and their families. We could not have afforded a full time school for our children on a single income, which would have meant without access to an affordable part time preschool, my children would have suffered from the loss of important early learning and social skills development. Only fourteen percent of three and four year olds in Oregon were enrolled in preschool in two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, and a citation for that is in my written testimony, which means a huge number of preschool aged children are not receiving the benefits of preschool on early development, kindergarten readiness, and the development of critical social skills. Our elected leaders must take steps to ensure that affordable preschool options are available in our community, and approving the use permit of an existing nonprofit preschool serving our community is one of the easiest ways to do that with no public investment required. We live in a childcare desert, and the approval criteria for livability must be considered in that context. The sound of children laughing and playing is no reason to deny children and families access to high quality preschool. It's also something anyone can expect to hear in their community. I frequently hear the sound of children playing from backyards of my neighbors at any time during daytime hours while I work from home. That is part of living in a community. The population of Beaverton has grown by over fifty percent since the conditional use permit limiting the number of children was approved in nineteen ninety-four, and it does not meet the needs of our community today thirty years later. Part of the approval criteria for modification is that the new or modified condition would better accomplish the purpose of the original condition. Clearly, expanding the number of children that can attend the school to meet the needs of our community today satisfies this condition. Splitting the nonprofit school across locations cannot meet the needs of the community for a number of reasons, including availability of space, cost and tuition impacts on families, and the need for parents to drop off and pick up children in different age classes from the same location. The concerns voiced about traffic are also misplaced. The number of cars traveling to the school is not equal to the number of children, since many families have multiple children. Where road is not so busy to cause any kind of backup on one hundred fifty first place and entrance to the church is the very first building on one hundred fifty first, meaning it is not resulting in cars driving in front of residential homes. The approval of Ash Creek's permit application serves an important community need and one that should hold no controversy. Children and families deserve access to high quality affordable preschool. Please do the right thing for children and families in Beaverton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Campos.
Hi, yes, uh, good evening, uh, city, Beaverton City Council. Uh, my name is Winsvei Campos, uh, address nine two four southeast Hillsborough, Oregon. I'm, uh, providing testimony this evening in my capacity as, uh, state senator for district eighteen, which encompasses, uh, parts of west Beaverton, south Hillsborough, and Aloha. Uh, Ash Creek Play School is in, is within the district that I represent, um, and I'm speaking in support of approving the appeal for the conditional use permit. Um, Ash Creek Play School, as much of the testimony before me has mentioned, is a vital resource for dozens of families in our community, providing much needed childcare and early learning opportunities. And approving this appeal is essential not only to sustain these services, but also to allow more families to join this vibrant community. The proposed project clearly meets all necessary approval criteria and will strengthen the livability of the community. And as, as y'all have had the chance to hear this evening, uh, the planning commission's decision to deny this permit was based solely on concerns about the noise of children playing. And while I understand truly the desire for a peaceful environment during school hours, the benefits that this facility provides greatly outweighs the impact of the noise. Moreover, childcare is a critical need in our area. In the state legislature, we have worked hard to improve our state's capacity for affordable childcare. Pre-COVID, Oregon had a childcare capacity of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and nineteen slots, and every county was a childcare desert for at least one age group. As of two thousand twenty-two, our system has capacity to serve a hundred and two thousand three hundred and ninety-four children, uh, which can be equated to a sustained loss of around twenty percent. Coming out of the pandemic, we passed critical legislation to stabilize our childcare workforce, making pay for the sector more competitive with other fields. And just this year, we established the Childcare Alliance within the state legislature. However, Washington County remains classified as a childcare desert with fewer than one spot available for every three families who require one. Childcare is not a luxury, it is a necessity. It allows parents to work, provides children with a safe, enriching environment, and helps families to thrive. We cannot undo the progress we've made solely to reduce noise during school hours. I respectfully ask you to approve this appeal to let the children play and learn and grow, recognizing that childcare intersects with so many other issues that we all care about. Housing, workforce, education, and it looks like my time is up. So thank you so much for the opportunity to, to provide comments.
Thank you, Senator Campos. Um, next speaker, please.
Christina Chirgwin? Chirgwin?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Christina Chirgwin. My address is one two four nine zero southwest one forty first place, Tigerd, Oregon nine seven two two three. And I am here as a parent and a strong supporter of Ash Creek Play School's request to increase its student capacity. Finding quality, accessible early education close to home has been a significant challenge for my family. Ash Creek Play School is a rare and invaluable resource, offering a cooperative play based early education model that stands out in our community. It provides care from Monday through Friday with extended hours, an uncommon feature among cooperative schools and preschools in the area. Remarkably, it costs about one third of what traditional preschool centers, daycares, and Montessori schools charge. Additionally, other affordable cooperative play schools may only offer care two days per week. Ash Creek's schedule and affordability ensure that high quality early education is accessible to families who might otherwise be excluded. Ash Creek's location is another key benefit. My family lives just five minutes away, making it a convenient and practical choice. The only comparable co-op play school with similar hours curriculum and costs is over twenty minutes away, a significant barrier for many families. With waitlists for daycares and preschool programs already long in this area, expanding Ash Creek's capacity is essential. Early education options in this area are extremely limited. The church where Ash Creek rents space offers ample room, providing a unique opportunity to address this pressing need. Not utilizing it fully would be a disservice to the community. Ash Creek is not just a school, it's a place where parents can actively participate in their children's education, a rare and meaningful opportunity. This school is a lifeline for many. I understand neighbors' concerns about noise and I sympathize. I've lived in apartments where noise is part of daily life. Even now in a house, I hear the usual sounds of the neighborhood, kids playing music, construction, yard work, and garbage trucks. There's always some level of noise during the day. These are all things I could choose to focus on and say they disturb my livability, but they are simply part of a vibrant community, and we accept them as a trade off for the benefits of living in a neighborhood in the city. Based on what I've heard, the neighbors are combining their concerns with noise outside of school hours. The children only use the playground for about an hour a day during the week during school hours. It seems unfair to blame these kids for hours they are not even there. Additionally, while on the playground, I have normal conversations with parents without any issues hearing or the need to speak loudly. On the issue of housing prices, people are desperate for homes. I cannot imagine a decrease in property values for any of these homes in this beautiful neighborhood. In fact, while we are looking for a place to buy a home, we found that neighborhoods of schools, playgrounds, and churches are highly desirable. Homes in such areas are often priced higher because of their convenience and sense of community. This neighborhood is no different, and Ash Creek Play School enhances its livability by providing a vital service to families. Finally, consider other neighborhoods in our city with great schools, playgrounds, parks integrated into the community. Imagine if those spaces were shut down due to noise concerns during appropriate daytime hours. It would deprive communities of essential educational and recreational opportunities. Let's not allow that to happen here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ellie Coppernall.
Ellie? Ellie Coppernall, please state your name and address.
Can we move to the next speaker?
Yeah.
Eric Lauren.
Hello, Eric Lauren, one four zero seven five southwest Paddock Court, Beaverton, Oregon nine seven zero zero eight. I've been a resident of south Beaverton neighborhood for approximately twenty years. My wife is a teacher employed by Ash Creek Play School. While this may appear to be a conflict of interest, I want to be clear, I'm here to provide my testimony as a longstanding resident of the community that is local to the Murray Hills Christian Church. I did not provide testimony at previous proceedings as I did not feel it necessary. The application process and decision seemed fairly straightforward. I'm an employee of Baxter International. We specialize in the design, development, and manufacturing of medical devices and supplies. Specifically, one of the devices that I lead the development for is the Spot Vision Screener. This is the device that's used for detecting eye conditions that can lead to vision impairment. This is the device that is primarily used for screening all school aged children throughout the state of Oregon. I've been working full time as a remote employee out of my house doing software development and leading globally diversified R and D teams for the past seven years. I've been working remotely. Well before the pandemic, I am acutely aware of the daily neighborhood distractions that all of us who choose to live in an urban area have to deal with. Here are some facts about our, my current situation and my residence. I'm less than a mile from Murray Hills Christian Church. My residence is eight hundred and seventeen feet from the center of the playground at Heighton Elementary, where four hundred and eighty-eight elementary school aged students are enrolled. They use the playground on a daily basis. There are multiple residents along southwest Single Tree Drive that are within a hundred feet of the playground on Heighton Park. There's wetlands, there's Heighton Park adjacent to that. I'm six hundred and thirty-one feet from the fire station on the corner of Brockman and Davies. The Heighton School is adjacent to Heighton Park where there are additional playground structures, active baseball fields, and soccer fields. Next to that is the southwest Baptist Church, where more school related activities take place on a daily basis. There are four additional playgrounds in our neighborhood, all of which have a residence within a hundred feet. There's a Colorines Early Learning Academic Academy, which is located approximately three hundred and thirty-three feet from my house. As a reminder, my residence is also my full time office where I work all day. My wife and I have three children, all of whom have successfully completed their public education in the Beaverton School District. They've all gone on to go through college education, they've moved on from that. I have another son that has, um, completed his service in the US Army, the combat medic. He is now attending Portland State University. I'd like to highlight some of these things because there's been claims around not being able to hear each other talk in their house, not being able to enjoy their outdoor space ever, high traffic area in their neighborhood being unsafe, decreased property values, school not being necessary because there being other childcare facilities available in the area. The list goes on and on and on. There's simply no way to size the size of the Murray Hills Christian Church. Puts anyone in that neighborhood into this, into a similar situation that we currently have. that we currently have in our residence. So let's just call this out for what it is and what is happening. We're dealing with elderly individuals that have too much time on their hands and lack the resources necessary to place themselves in a better environment.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Lisa Durda?
Hi, my name is Lisa Durda. I live at one-five-four-four-zero Southwest Sand Piper Lane. Um, I live within two blocks of the school. Um, my children went to this school there before we moved. And we, um, we were looking for local affordable childcare, and we found exactly that. Um, I actually looked at a lot of other schools, um, for my kids that I found to be very loud and had really, really high, uh, student to ratio, I don't know, I'm sorry, teacher to students. And I chose, um, Ash Creek because it was small, it was quiet for my kids. So it's hard to hear, um, so many people have complaints about how loud they are because in my experience, um, it was a quiet environment for my children who are no longer in preschool. Um, we do live within the area. I understand that parks are loud. Um, I understand that traffic is something that, you know, even the school itself was very concerned about. They did put up a fence around the playground, um, to really be more protective of the children. Um, there are two churches that are adjacent to each other. I can say from my house, um, there has been times where I have heard, not from Murray Hills Church, but from the church, uh, immediately adjacent to it. It's a much larger church that uses amplified sound. Um, it's never bothered me, but it is something I can hear within my own home. Um, I've never heard Murray Hill chil- Murray Hill from my own home, and I live within two blocks. Um, it's a beautiful campus. Um, very, the things that struck me most about Ash Creek was that they're very inclusive. Um, they're very diverse, and there you have, I think it's a one-to-three ratio, student to children. I think the classroom sizes that my children were in were one to ten, so one teacher to ten students. This is a wonderful school. It would be heartache to have it not exist there or to be told that students couldn't go there to, it just do the right thing and please allow this, um, school to exist. Thank you for, I'll yield my time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ari Escobar?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
All right. Hi, my name is Carrie, it's actually pronounced Cotty Escobar. My address is ones, one-zero-three-seven-one Southwest North Dakota Street in Tigard. I am here at the Erz City Council to approve the appeal of the conditional use permit. I am a parent, and then I became a teacher at Ash Creek Play School. Um, I would like to say that children making noise should not be a reason for rejecting the conditional use permit. The playground is open to the public from dusk to dawn, and it's not logical to limit the school because children from the school are not the only ones who use the playground and are, and they're supervised by qualified staff who can help manage the noise levels. The conditional use permit also plans to give stricter limits on the amount of time children can be outside during the day, which seems, um, like it works in favor for those in opposition to, um, the conditional use permit. Noise is also just one aspect of livability. I am a former Realtor, um, and I have actually worked several times in this specific neighborhood, and I have never, ever heard any concerns about excessive noise brought up from either buyers or sellers. Um, in fact, having a school and a playground in the neighborhood not only boosts, uh, quality of life, but also the value of your home. I also believe that livability has a broader definition. Um, do we want our community and our city to have educated, emotionally intelligent, and inclusive community members? Because that is what Ash Creek does best. Um, from tiny toddlers to children to take on public school, Ash Creek staff and families are committed to raising kind, empathetic, and emotionally intelligent, and justice-oriented children that will grow up to change the world. A world full of people committed to equal rights, accessibility for all, and empathy in every hard situation is the kind of livability I would love to see in our city. Ash Creek has also played a significant role in my life. I joined in two thousand and twenty-one. I was a single mom who was healing from domestic violence. I then, um, went on to get married and get pregnant. And through all of these stages in life, uh, Ash Creek Play School and the community that I found there has absolutely come to me in my time of need. Um, I unfortunately suffered a miscarriage, and the family and teachers, um, at Ash Creek Play School not only helped me in my grief, but also helped my daughter, who was three at the time, process her loss. When I went on to get pregnant again, I was incredibly sick, and our community at Ash Creek stepped up and helped out with my daughter. They had her over, they took her to playdates, they made sure that she felt loved and safe when I had very little to give. My daughter is now thriving and in public school because of the love and support and education she received at Ash Creek. To limit Ash Creek is to limit community and to limit chosen family and to limit love. I personally think that we need more love in our world. So for that reason, I urge the city council to approve the appeal and reverse the planning commission's decision on the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Um, next speaker, please.
Taylor Golson?
Ella Golson? Let's go to the next speaker.
Julie Lauren?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Julie Lauren, my pronouns are she and her. My address is less than a mile from Ash Creek Play School at one-four-zero-seven-five Southwest Paddock Court. I am the director of Ash Creek and lead teacher of the three-and-a-half-to-five-year-old class at Ash Creek. We have searched for two years to find an affordable and comparable place for our school to relocate to. We haven't found anything that is available or affordable, especially within a reasonable distance of the families that live close by Murray Hills Christian Church. The teachers also live within a mile or two of the school and don't want a longer commute. This school does work for us. It has the right amount of space for classrooms and the amount of students that we would like to have enrolled per day. The location is perfect because we live nearby, most of us within walking distance. Please know that we will not increase the number of children outside at one time out of respect, but also it would be unsafe. I live eight-hundred-and-seventeen feet from the center of Heighton Elementary's playground. They follow the same safety guidelines, meaning just a portion of the students are outside on the playground at any given time, about ninety students out of four-hundred, which is three or four classes at a time, thirty students per class. Reading through all the criteria and answers, you can see all the recommendations to approve. We have met all the criteria. Again, we will not increase the number of children outside. We only want to spread thirty-five students per day out into three classrooms inside the building. The current cup is outdated. We want to provide for current needs in Beaverton. Please approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Amara Gothard?
Amara is my seven-year-old daughter who previously attended Ash Creek. Given how late this meeting has run, she will not be testifying, but I do ask that you review her brief written testimony in exhibit APP three-point-four, page sixty-three of the one-hundred-eleven-page packet. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
We're gonna go back to Ellie, apparently she's online now. Kopernol? Kopernol? Sorry. We're still in the proponents.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, city council members, my name is Ellie Kopernol, and I live at nine-eight-eight-five Southwest one-fifty-eighth Avenue. I'm speaking on behalf of my daughter's school and the important role that it plays for her, my family, and my neighborhood. I strongly urge you to approve the conditional use permit for Ash Creek Play School. I moved to Beaverton to join a community that would be good for my young, growing family with strong schools and family-friendly communities. We have two young children and quickly look for care for our oldest. We found Ash Creek Place School in a location that's about one minute away from our home. This school has reinforced our decision to move here and the livability of this neighborhood. It provides affordable, convenient care in our community. It has allowed both my husband and I to continue our careers with local businesses. We have gained an instant community when we had none just a year ago. Our daughter is thriving in school. She gained confidence, friends, and many new skills. I'm not sure any other school could fit our needs the way this one has. We need to expand access to places like these through increased enrollment. Last year, my neighbor expressed interest in having her daughter join Ash Creek. Unfortunately, she was unable to enroll because we had so many families returning from the year before that the class in the school was full. I know there is a need in the immediate community, just one minute away, um, at Ash Creek for additional preschool spaces, especially the kind that is so focused on age-appropriate play and learning with a strong teacher-to-child ratio. There is an incredible retention rate at our school. Families come back year after year because of the strength of the education and the community that it builds. The livability of our community depends on Ash Creek and co-op preschools in which parents can play an active role in their childhood education. It fills us with a sense of safety and security, knowing that parents are involved in the classroom each and every day. I want our neighborhood and our community to be filled with the sounds of children laughing, playing, and learning. It actually adds to my feeling of safety and security and happiness in my daily life. We look forward to welcoming more growing families into this neighborhood and hopefully into the school. I have a younger child, and I really hope that there is space to enroll him at Ash Creek next year. Please approve the conditional use permit so there is space for more children. This school is run by parent volunteers, and we have diligently worked to meet all of the approval requirements of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we're gonna circle back to Taylor Golson?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, okay. Um, hi, my name is Taylor Golson. I have resided at one-oh-one-six-oh Southwest one-forty-eighth Avenue, Beaverton, Oregon, nine-seven-one-oh-one, or one-zero. Seven, since I was twelve years old, almost twenty years. Over the years, I have had the pleasure of babysitting for many people in this neighborhood, including some of the opponents of while their kids have played at Murray Hills Christian Church's, Church's playground with my younger sibling. I'm sorry. I am now a mother of two and a professional in the Beaverton School District, and thanks to Ash Creek Play School, I joined Ash Creek while I was looking for a preschool for my oldest son when he was four in two thousand and twenty-one. Since I live in this neighborhood, the ability to walk to school, be a part of their education, and create a network of like-minded parents was one of the top of my list. I have spoken multiple times at these hearings how Ash Creek has graciously allowed my kids and family to stay free of charge while my husband fought stage-four cancer in two thousand and twenty-two. He was twenty-nine, and our youngest was one. The community and relationships forged over almost five years has been invaluable to me, my kids, and our family as we navigated three rounds of inpatient chemotherapy and four cross-country surgeries for my husband. The teachers and parents took them in as their own when neither of us could physically be there, ensuring they would get the care and love a parent so desperately wants anytime their kids are away from them. Fast forward, my husband is in remission, and we remained at Ash Creek. I was elected onto the Board as registrar, where all board members are parents of kids attending and worked voluntarily to make our school run. I was then hired as an assistant teacher, which gave me the experience I needed to now land a career I love so much within the Beaverton School District. Ash Creek Play School hours run from nine AM to one PM, Monday through Friday. With an emphasis on play, most parents are drawn to our program due to the fact that we embrace the abil- the beauty of the Pacific Northwest weather and are outside no matter what, aside from dangerous conditions all year round. I'd like to touch on the fact that the max time any classes are outside are under two hours during these operation times. As my kids are growing older and they age out of the school, I find myself seeking the type of program Ash Creek offers, but the truth is, it doesn't exist. I will never find what Ash Creek has provided for my family. The ability to grow my career from a stay-at-home mom to a working professional that provides for my family, lifelong friendships, and the foundation for my children to trust other adults and learn how to be good people are priceless. Ash Creek Play School is a gift to parents seeking community when they otherwise may not have it. And the approval of the conditional use permit allows the Azalea kindergarten class and the rest of our currently enrolled friends limited to the previous conditionally, conditional use permit to join us back in our school. All we want is to be back together again and to continue this amazing learning space for current and future kids and families to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, um, my name is Mike Munley. I live at eight-three-six-zero Southwest Hundred and Fifty-Fourth Avenue in Beaverton. Uh, thanks for, uh, staying up late to hear me. Um, I live less than a mile from Ash Creek. Uh, I have three kids who have been part of Ash Creek. Currently, two daughters, uh, one in the, uh, pre-kindergarten class over at Conestoga currently, and the other in the preschool class at, uh, Ash Creek. And I can't in three minutes, uh, tell you what a positive impact, uh, the school has had for all my kids, uh, and for our family. Uh, I've heard the, the points and counterpoints at the previous hearings and tonight, and I just felt compelled to clarify a few things. Um, I've heard opponents refer to Ash Creek as a daycare, and it's, it's not a daycare, it's so much more than that as a, as a cooperative school. It's parents who are volunteering their time to be in the classroom every day, setting up, being teachers throughout the day, and then cleaning up afterwards. Uh, it's a place where all kids are accepted. No one's expelled. We just work together as a big family to take care of every child and, uh, help them, uh, navigate, uh, the early years and, and teach and learn and play. I've heard tonight the term de novo used to describe technical terms in, um, in jargon relating to laws and, and things, but Ash Creek is de novo community. Uh, it's just a place where people have come together and, and became family members. Um, and parents are, are creating this community by giving their time, and it keeps prices low, which makes it accessible and affordable for people. Uh, I also wanted to clarify that the kids are outside for a scheduled recess. They typically last about fifty minutes per day, um, during the hours of nine to one. And at my most recent parent-teacher shift last Thursday, I was, uh, with my daughter over at Conestoga, and it was our turn to review a holiday tradition. And, uh, we were reading our favorite holiday book. We were, uh, reading, uh, How the Grinch Stole Christmas. And it really, uh, made me think of Ash Creek's situation. When we got to the part of the book where there were efforts to stifle Christmas, uh, based on the noise, 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 noise made by the Who Girls and the Who Boys. And I realized that communities make noise. Joyful things make noise. And, uh, I just hope that we realize that the benefits of teaching kids about community, about becoming members of a community, the joy of playing and learning outweigh the complaints of the noise. Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Leslie Jaeger, um, we've given you, uh, speaking privileges, so if you could unmute your mic.
Let's move on to the next speaker.
Hello. My name is Christine Gilson. I live at one-five-three-eight-oh Southwest Sand Piper Lane in Beaverton. I'm approximately a block and a half away from Murray Hill Community Church. I have lived on Sand Piper Lane for thirty-three years and have seen families grow, move on, and younger families. and have seen families grow, move on, and younger families move in. At this time, there are 16 children under 10 and six under 18 on San Piper. The playground at Murray Hill Community is a neighborhood meeting place and has been so for years and years. At this time, I'm invested in Ash Creek Play School because my four grandsons attend Ash Creek. My community is this area. My support is for Ash Creek. My vote is in favor of the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Council President, it looks like Leslie has raised her hand again. I'm gonna try to give her permission to talk, but she is the last speaker for the proponents.
Are you asking for Leslie?
Yes, she raised her hand.
No, it's myself, but it's my wife. It's not for, we're not for this side.
Okay.
We're one of the immediate near the church.
Okay.
So Council President Kimmy, that's the last of the proponents we had.
Okay.
Let us know when you're ready for opponents.
So we're moving on to the testimony in opposition. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please go ahead.
Lisa Carpenter.
I was actually wanting to speak in favor of Ash Creek and their appeal. I don't know if something got mixed up, but I'm happy to talk on that if I can.
Please do.
Okay, great, I'm ready. Good evening. My name is Lisa Carpenter, and I live at 8547 Southwest 133rd Avenue in Beaverton. I've lived at my current residence for nearly 12 years, and my family has called Beaverton Home for the last 15. My husband and I have a five-year-old daughter who has been a student at Ash Creek Play School for the past three school years. This year, she's in the Transitional Kindergarten Program. And I'm here to respectfully request that the Beaverton City Council approve the appeal for the conditional use permit requested by Ash Creek Play School. This project meets all the necessary approval criteria, and I firmly believe it will enhance the livability of our neighborhood by increasing access to high-quality, early childhood education for local families. When my daughter was younger, we faced significant challenges in finding a preschool that could meet our needs. As a neurodivergent child, she encountered many barriers. We tried multiple other preschools prior to Ash Creek Play School, and each time, within weeks or once days, I would get that inevitable phone call saying that they couldn't accommodate her and that we were sent packing to find a new school. And honestly, I seriously contemplated giving up my career to help support my family because I just could not bear to put her through another rejection or disruption to her education. Finding a preschool is more than just checking Google Maps for nearby options. It's one, you have to find one with availability and actual open spots, a schedule that works for us as working parents, and most importantly, a fully inclusive environment that would embrace kids of all kinds. Ash Creek Play School was a lifeline for our family. From day one, they provided a stable, supportive environment where my daughter could not only stay, but thrive. She's been at Ash Creek for, this is her third year now, and the progress I've seen in her development is just absolutely remarkable. The teachers and community have helped her grow into the passionate, curious child she is today. This experience has been life-changing for my family and is one of the reasons why we continue to call Beaverton Home. And when my daughter has grown and moved on from Ash Creek Play School, I know that there will be other families in situations much like ours who also need to find that lifeline at the school. We chose to live in Beaverton and put down roots because of livability. And for us, livability means a community where children are valued and given opportunities to learn and grow. Schools like Ash Creek Play School are central to that vision, helping children of mind develop into positive, contributing members of our society. While my personal experience with Ash Creek Play School has been deeply meaningful, I want to emphasize that this appeal is about more than just my story. It's about meeting the approval criteria for the conditional use permit. Ash Creek Play School has demonstrated that their project meets these standards, and I believe it will bring long-term benefits to our community by offering a valuable resource for our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna hear for testimony in opposition. Leslie? Yeager?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is actually, this is Doug Yeager. This is Leslie's husband. We're at 10070 Southwest 151st Place. We're basically three doors down from the church. I regard it as a church. And I just wanted to say, it's still baffling to me. I understand how people feel about Ash Creek and the, all sorts of, and it's amazing too, even a senator spoke, wow. But the Ash Creek, basically, it's odd to me that we've heard nothing from the church. You know, I've heard no one talk about the church. No one is actually attending the church, apparently, are the people that are talking about Ash Creek. But anyways, and nothing much has been brought up. One thing I want to say to the council is, somebody needs to come visit this site. Because if you look at the maps, the size of the church and the size of the play area and the size of the parking lot does not at all match 60 children. And as I think Jenna said for Ash Creek, the 10 people that are going to be tending to the children. The parking area is very small. The one driveway that comes out onto our street is basically somewhat of a traffic mess when it comes to people going to the school. And as every, like I said, everything's been talked about in this, makes it sound like it's a school. It's not a school, it's a church, and Ash Creek is using it. And on the other hand, the church is using the area on behalf of the neighborhood. So, and no one here is like against kids, no one is against the way everyone portrays it. But when you're talking about how 20 kids is compared to 60 kids, and I know they're trying to change everything to somehow get this to pass, it doesn't make sense to me. When people are saying, there's, you know, there's play structures all over the place. I think even the guy that spoke for Ash Creek, he talked about how many play structures were over by his area, which isn't very far from here. There's a play structure right up on the hill here in the green space. They're all over the place. But I just feel that people are somehow on this rail that they need to have this place here when that facility is not made to or can handle what is being discussed here. And please look into that, because it's a serious issue. It's not just people being old. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Uh, yes, my name is David Goldar. I think we know where I'm at, but for the record, I'm at 10175 Southwest 149th Terrace here in Beaverton. My home is immediately south of Ash Creek and the church, and I've lived here for 25 years. Obviously, I'm here not in opposition to Ash Creek. We've lived next to a preschool the entire time we've been here. I'm not in opposition to kids, I have my own. We're in opposition to the loud, unmitigated noise. We've made that clear, and there's over 23 people, including myself, I should say homes, that are in agreement on this. The noise is too much. It prevents us from using our homes, and that's not livable. We can't sleep in them, people can't talk. It's a serious problem. It's because the site's not designed for it. It's also because Ash Creek and the church will not invest in any noise mitigation and have a return, or excuse me, refuse to invest in a noise sound wall. Their own expert brought up the need for one in their study. Ours did as well. This is an issue at this site. Four decision-making bodies, all independently, have decided that 20 is the appropriate limit at this site without noise mitigation. That's four decision-making bodies, including the most recent one. In addition to that, their own noise study actually supports our assertion. If you look within it, it shows that 10 students produce enough noise to come close to or exceed DEQ noise limits. What's gonna happen when you double that? You're gonna have a problem. In addition, we lived through two years of them being at 35 students, which is what started this problem in the first place with no noise mitigation. And as far as our expert, he only has 50 years of experience in the field of acoustics and is one of the most sought-after, foremost experts in the entire state in this field. And here's what he had to say about it. Ash Creek Playschool is in error to state that they are exempt from having to meet the state noise regulations. To confirm this fact, he spoke with John Hector, the retired engineer who was involved in writing the DEQ noise regulations and the first manager. And he said that nonprofit or for-profit preschools are not exempt from the regulations. In addition, he spoke with Ben Wolf, who actually did the ABD study, who went on to say he wasn't aware that this is actually a third-party preschool. As such, it's a business. And when he heard that the play school was a not-private, nonprofit business, he said that the fact would have changed his opinion about the applicability of the DEQ noise regulations. The bottom line, folks, is they haven't provided sufficient evidence to show that they're in compliance with the law, and as a result, the planning commission turned them down, just like the other four did previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Becky? Let's move on to the next speaker. And Perout?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am speechless.
Please state your full name and your address, please, for the record.
My name is Ann Perot. I live at 10170 Southwest 149th Terrace. I am speechless that we've just listened for approximately two hours of parents telling us how much they love their children. We get it. I have lived in this house since 1992. I have two children who are in their 30s. I love them just as much. When they were growing up, I got on waiting lists to get on with the Cedar Hills Cooperative preschool and kindergarten. I was there for seven years between the two children. This is not unique. Each of their children is unique. But this situation is out of control. How you sit there and listen to 20 people tell you how much they love their children? We know that. But you know what? When they get to be six years old, they're gonna have to go to another school. What are they gonna do then? I'm sorry, the whole, this whole process, they have been disingenuous. Every single person who has spoken, I could have rebutted. But I am certainly going to do that step by step. I only have three minutes. They took two hours. So I guess more is better. This preschool should not be there. Is it a preschool? Is it a daycare center? Is it a kindergarten? I don't know. But it's, it could be a playground. And could I tell you that I went up there today? The playground has a wooden fence on the south side, which is locked. The north side has a chain link fence, which is not locked. Now, what is it? A private playground or a public playground? Please, please, hold up the planning committee's decision.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Uh, that's the last of our online speakers. We have two in person. Doug Gordon.
Okay, Doug, you're up next.
To the mic.
Counsel, thank you for this opportunity to present my evidence.
Say your name and address one more time for the record.
Douglas Gordon, 10050 Southwest 151st Place. My property is immediately adjacent to the church property. I've lived there for 28 years. I've lived in Beaverton for 45. First, let me just say, we are not in opposition to Ash Creek as a preschool or preschool as a important opportunity for young children. That's not why we're here. And I might add, I began my career as a sixth-grade school teacher. I have some background and knowledge about these things that we're speaking of. First of all, let's be clear. The denial of the conditional use application of Ash Creek does not result in closing Ash Creek. It limits it to 20 students, which is, has been decided four times before to be the proper level that will not degrade the livability of surrounding properties. And by the way, Ash Creek has already expanded to the Conestoga Rec Center, where it's moved its kindergarten. Perhaps the council hasn't heard much about that, but might want to know more. Kindergarten is not a school. They're operating a kindergarten. If you'd like to look at my exhibit I submitted yesterday to Mr. Regner, you'll see photographs of banners on the church last July saying "Now Enrolling Kindergarten." And then in a national advertisement online in social media, it describes itself, "Ash Creek Play School. It's a half-day, nonprofit preschool and kindergarten." If Ash Creek needs to expand, it could expand over there. Meanwhile, see, counsel might want to ask more about the kindergarten, which is not preschool. I want to talk about my own experience and then get on to the burden of proof, which is, given my limited time, is this. This is having a tremendous impact on me and my enjoyment and property and use of it. I hear the noise indoors with the windows closed. I have stopped using my decks for the last three years because the noise has become so loud and intolerable. It is an out-of-control situation. As one gentleman said, "It's bedlam." And the last thing I'm going to say is that it is the burden of the applicant to prove, that is, to prove that the three elements of the approval criteria have been met. There is no evidence that they've been met. What you've heard is evidence from people who are impacted. With all due respect to all those witnesses and advocates for Ash Creek, none of them none of them is qualified to testify about whether or not the noise and the traffic has a minimal impact because they don't live anywhere near where they can hear it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we ask you to uphold the planning commission, uh, decision and order. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ron Sattler is your last speaker.
Thank you. I'm going to hit a few items quickly because I don't have a lot of time. First, I've lived in the neighborhood for thirty-two years. It is not a childcare desert. Other parts of Washington County, maybe, but not our neighborhood. I called in September and October and found nineteen preschools and daycare facilities closer than where Ash Creek runs its kindergarten program. We heard from, uh, Daniel Hauser. He has a child, maybe more, at Ash Creek. He lives four point six miles away. That's a long distance. Part of that is because, the way I understand it from him, is that his mother-in-law lives somewhat nearby and picks up the child or children after, uh, the school is done for the day. The vast majority of people that are at Ash Creek do not live in the neighborhood. The three people that I know that live in the neighborhood that have that age children, one, uh, attends. The other two, um, go to, uh, Southwest Bible Church, which is about another block away from Ash Creek. The Beaverton Public Schools have similar programs that they offer in fifteen of their schools. Three are close by. The sound report, if you read it, says it was done when seven and ten kids were outdoors. It's not one hour a day. It's one hour a day for each of the classes. The new fence they talked about that was going to help with sound, it's a cyclone fence. It doesn't do anything for sound. Ash Creek expansion does not meet community values. I know my neighbors. It's not compatible with the neighborhood. A couple of other items. The landscaping that was approved and the conditional use permit was ripped up when they put the much, much larger playground in. Mr. Regner's department didn't bother to address that. They needed to. There was a series of voluntary compliance agreements, and about four of them had to be extended because Ash Creek didn't meet the requirements. And lastly, other people ran over, and I will too. The, uh, last couple of items, um, I want you to remember.
Thank you. We already heard, uh, all the testimony. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Well, be prepared, you're going to see us again at Luba. Thank you.
City Recorder, is there anyone else to speak in opposition?
No.
Okay. We're moving on to testimony neither in support nor in opposition. Is there anyone wishing to speak, City Recorder?
No.
Okay. Um, there appears to be no member of the public who wants to speak neither in support nor in opposition. So that concludes the public testimony. We'll move on to the applicant's rebuttal. Applicant now has five minutes to respond to the testimony. Please stick to the time limit. Thank you.
You bet. Hello again, Daniel Hauser. I'm at one nine six nine six southwest Murphy Street, which you'll recall is four point six miles away from Ash Creek. Uh, thank you, um, for pointing that out. I wish I could afford to live closer. Anyway, it's late, so I'll try to be quick. I, I hope you all can see through the kids are great, just not in my backyard arguments and proceed with overturning the planning commission decision and approving our appeal. Ash Creek cannot successfully function with twenty kids and total enrollment. Uh, our older group at Conestoga will not be sustainable without immense tuition increases. The rent there is more than the rent for our whole space at Murray Hills Christian Church. So, to recap, we need more early education slots in our community. We meet the original approval criteria. Staff recommended approval without additional conditions to the planning commission. And in particular, we align well with the policy direction on neighborhood livability and integration of schools into neighborhoods in the comp plan. The only reason the planning commission chose to deny our application was noise. However, the sound of children playing is not just joyful, but also exempt. And, you know, there might be some dispute about the exemption from their sound engineer. So a condition of approval to explicitly require our compliance with applicable regulations is acceptable. If we need to move forward with additional unusual restrictive conditions of approval that have been discussed, we'll accept that to ensure that we can bring our Ash Creek family back together. So please approve this appeal. I, I have to know how deeply I appreciate the testimony shared by neighbors, including a number who do live within earshot or sight of the church property, from Ash Creek families, from our senator, and so many others. We're also grateful for the support of the church, who did testify before the planning commission about the importance of education and children to their mission and their values. And I hope we can find a path forward, living, playing, and learning in this neighborhood alongside our neighbors. Thank you all.
Thank you. Um, does staff have any further comments or clarification regarding proposed application?
Yes, thank you, uh, Council President Kimmy. Again, Steve Regner, Senior Planner, City Beaverton. Just, I recognize time, so I can be very quick here, but I do want to address a couple of points of contention here. It was raised multiple times in public testimony, uh, that four decision-making bodies had considered enrollment expansion and decided that twenty was appropriate number. That is incorrect. This is only the second, um, land use application for this. There was the establishment of twenty in nineteen ninety-four. Uh, the Montessori school asked for twenty, and they got twenty. Subsequently, there has been no consideration of any expansion until this land use application originally brought forth in twenty twenty-three, now currently under appeal. So this is really only the first time this, an expansion has been considered at this site. There has been issues discussed about DEQ and applicability. Staff cites condition of approval five, um, shared in the December tenth memo, uh, requiring that all applicable DEQ standards be met. Um, there are questions about what type of facility this is. Uh, staff vary clearly in their, um, in their, uh, materials. Um, clarify, this is a childcare facility consistent with the original conditional use permit. Uh, there was testimony about the play area and its expansion. Uh, that issue has been settled with the previous hearing. It is not applicable to this hearing. There are testimony stating that the testimony tonight from neighbors did not demonstrate meeting the approval criteria. Whether that is true or not, staff cites findings in, uh, the initial October second staff report, subsequent supplemental memos, the appeal memo dated November twenty-sixth, and three supplemental notes after that, as applicable, uh, to meeting the approval criteria and demonstrating that it does so. Finally, there's issues about whether or not the landscaping was appropriately modified with the conditional use permit. Uh, that is not how our process works. Um, the design review compliance letter we discussed at the previous hearing is the application to deal with the play area expansion. And again, that has been settled. Uh, finally, there's questions of whether the voluntary compliance agreement and how that was handled. Voluntary compliance agreement is not part of the land use process. It's a separate code enforcement issue. Um, so that is outside the scope of this review. Um, and one final thing, I do want to share my screen one more time, um, because I believe this was helpful, um, for counselors in my initial presentation. And these are the, uh, recommended conditions of approval in the December tenth, uh, memo. I want to focus, um, and clarify that conditions one, two, and five, are critical procedural or finding, um, conditions of approval. So we recommend that those remain as is. Conditions of approval three, four, and six, which speak to mitigation measures of number of children, number of children outside, or hours outside, those are ones that council can determine are appropriate, could be modified or removed. Those are ones you can probably tweak if appropriate. Uh, but conditions one, two, and five, uh, staff would recommend, uh, do not modify at all for procedural or legal reasons. That concludes staff comments, and, uh, we are happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Also, Hatta, you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I, I'm pretty sure you've said this, but I just want this again for clarification. Can you remind us that hours of operation of this, um, of the school?
Currently, they are operating nine AM to one PM. And in this proposal, they are not proposing to deviate from that, although there's no condition of approval requiring them to operate during those hours. But they have stated that is their intent to move forward, continuing at that nine AM to one PM.
Thank you.
Any counselors have a question for the staff? I, I have a question where, um, asking three hours of playtime. They're operating three hours total? Or ten, eleven, twelve, actually four?
Uh, yes, their, their current operating hours, nine to one, is four hours. Um, under current, current requirements, uh, they could use the play area for those entire four hours. As I mentioned before, if they want to extend to a full school day, they could use the area for the full school day. Uh, the condition of approval we've discussed, uh, would limit that access to three hours, whether they continue to operate from nine to one or some other modified schedule that, uh, you know, that might come up in the future. Um, they would still be restricted to those three hours if that condition of approval, uh, is included, um, in a city council approval.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counselor Duggar?
Yeah, I think I heard this earlier, but I just want to make sure. The conditional use is agnostic to the actual tenant? It continues for, in the future? So if we approve these, uh, additional conditions and say Ash Creek decided to move on and another school or something moved in, they would be subject to that, right? So we need to think about this, not just as applicable to Ash Creek, but as applicable to the land and the potential use of it. Is that?
That is.
Okay.
Yeah, a hundred percent. You got that correct.
Thank you.
Okay, um, if there's no further questions, does the city attorney have any further comments?
Uh, I have no further comments, but if you need assistance in developing a motion, don't hesitate to ask me.
And I will just say one more thing. If council would find it helpful to have those conditions of approval shared on screen, please just let me know. I'm happy to share them again.
Uh, I would, I would like that. Having, are there any further questions? Uh, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion? Oh, actually, uh, Counselor Hartmeyer, pray.
Yes, Chair. I just wanted to state that there were twelve elements of criteria under section forty dot zero three dot one dot L, all of which were met according to staff analysis. And our staff are professional planners, and they work with the Beaverton Code every day. Under section twenty, all criteria was either met or didn't apply in this scenario. And so in my opinion, this conditional use should be approved. Additionally, some of the conditions included in staff memo dated December tenth, as seen on screen, I believe are unnecessary based on the application because I think that the application meets the criteria for conditional use without some of the conditions on the screen. The specific conditions I do not believe are required to meet the conditional use criteria are items three and four listed on the screen. So as a result, I move that we grant the appeal number APPC two zero two four dash zero one zero four five and reverse the planning commission's decision denying LU three two zero two three dash zero zero five five seven, Ash Creek Play School, major modification of a conditional use, CU three two zero two three dash zero zero five five five, subject to conditions number one, two, five, and six of the staff memorandum dated December tenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that. Counselor Hudson can have it.
Counselor Hudson, um, you have a you have a comment or?
Yes, um, I, I think Counselor Teeter can have the second. It's totally fine. Um, I, again, wanted to take a moment and acknowledge all of the folks who've joined us right here, here at eleven fourteen PM. And I think it's important, that's why we have these hearings, and that's why we have these processes. I do agree with Counselor Hartmeyer, Prague. Um, and I emphasize with both the neighbors and folks who send their kiddos to this school. Um, as a mom of three young kids, knowing what it's like to deal with daycare and have childcare, I fully support the, the direction that we're heading. Um, I want to talk a little bit about number, conditions three and four, just to kind of elaborate. Given that the school really operates during the daytime, limiting to three hours per day feels like a lot. Um, I don't believe that is the direction that I want to have our council and our legacy be as we, you know, try to ensure that we have good livability here in the city. And on number four, um, you know, limiting the number of children, again, this is something that's operated during the day. And so in my mind, that limitation, it, it, I struggle with it. Um, and there was a specific comment that was made. I believe it was the fire truck, right? So if you have someone, um, that wants to come and you've got a bunch of kids that you want to have be outside, you know, I, I, I support, um, removing those conditions for the sake of joy of children. Uh, I don't think that for folks who are like, oh, this is about noise, this is about this. I think just coming together and acknowledging that we're continuing to grow in this city and in this community and that embracing that growth is hard and complicated. But, you know, getting to know our neighbors in whatever ways they are, I, 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 I'm really thankful for Counselor Hartmeyer, Prague, to make this motion, and I will be supporting it the way that it is. Thanks.
Move forward, Teeter.
Thank you. I was really excited for Counselor Hartmeyer, Prague, to make this motion, and I'm excited to support it. These decisions are based as closely on development code and our comprehensive plan as they can possibly be. And I do realize that there is some discretion in the term of livability. Uh, but I think we've got to recognize that livability extends beyond just direct neighbors or just a handful of people. Recognizing that childcare is an essential need in our community, of all different types of childcare and all different, uh, neighborhoods. Um, so I, I really appreciate the flexibility that we're able to provide here, and we'll be really excited to support this going forward.
Any, uh, anyone else want to make a comment? Uh, Counselor Duggar?
Yeah, I just, uh, uh, very quickly want to acknowledge our planning commission, too. They put in a lot of this, and I do not overturn their decisions very lightly. I'm going to support this motion, too. I, I hear a lot of, and I sympathize with the neighbors with noise, but I, I think we, we are on the hook for bigger parts of this with land use and things. And, and I really do, uh, just want to say I don't overturn things lightly, so I, I acknowledge their work, and I really appreciate it. And, and there's a lot of emotions and things going on tonight, but, um, I think we'll get to the right decision.
Counselor Teeter?
Thank you. I'll be supporting it as well. Though I, I echo Counselor Duggar's comments about the surrounding neighbors. It's, it's really hard to see change within a neighborhood when you've been used to it a certain way for a long time, but this is not new. This, uh, facility has been operating as a preschool for quite a long time now. And based on the feedback from the operators, that it's not like they're going to sixty tomorrow. Uh, they just want to have room to grow. That provides a long runway to see these numbers increase in terms of enrollment. Um, but I also think it'll be interesting to see what the demand is for it over time in that area. I have no doubt it's going to increase, um, but I also I have no doubt it's going to increase, but I also know this is an extremely unaffordable area of town for a lot of the residents who live here. So I don't have concerns about impacts. Property values might just be different people that are attracted to live in this area because of the assets in it, like early childhood education. So being able to support that, being able to make a really hard decision in some ways tonight, knowing that there's going to be some unhappy folks based on this decision, but it goes directly to one of our commitments to our community to increase the amount of early childhood options for families. And having been there myself, when you're just going paycheck to paycheck trying to pay for daycare, to know that your child is not only in a safe environment, but an affordable one, and one in which they're learning and thriving in their own area, in their own city, is something I wish I had had that when I was in those years. So thank you to everybody who came out to give testimony tonight and for everyone hanging in there until eleven thirty at night, which I'm sure will probably go a little longer than that. Who knows? They will break some records tonight.
Thank you. My comment is that I do not take likely to overturn any planning commission's recommendations. But I thought about it where we have to make investments for the future of Beaverton, where we need people to come in and then raise kids, and this makes young and old and everybody in between have to enjoy and make this city their home. And I want to invest our time and effort to have them build their family and wealth in Beaverton. This is one of the first steps we take. I know there are people who might not be happy, but these are the hard decisions that we have to make and look to the future. So with that, we are ready for a vote on the ordinance adoption. Would the city recorder please call the roll?
Yes, Council President, excuse me, Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Council President Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. We'd like to thank all who have testified tonight. Your comments have been very helpful. If you'd like to appeal this decision, you must appeal to Land Use Board of Appeals in accordance with Luba's rules and any applicable provisions in the Beaverton Development Code. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to recommend that we reschedule the work session for future meeting. Or is Jenny's going to suggest that?
I'll support that, Council President.
Is that okay with you, Jenny?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Counselor New Business, the final item on the agenda is New Business. Does anyone have anything to wish to share? You better not. Oh, anyone? Okay. Counselor Hassan?
I'm so sorry. I can't not bring this up. Counselor Kimmy and I last night were a part of the council liaison for an ATRAC meeting where we spoke with members about just what was going on with the council and board, sorry, the boarding commission work that we're doing. I know that we're still working through what the council retreat timeline will look like, and I don't want to put more on the council retreat. But I was hoping if we were able to find time to do some of that discussion because folks just felt very disconnected from decisions that are being made about boards and commissions. So I know that it's eleven twenty-three, and it's a tall order. But Counselor Kimmy and I were kind of in the hot seat last night and would love to be able to give some direction or feedback in future meetings. We both happen to be liaisons for ATRAC, and Counselor Kimmy, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'll support Counselor Hassan's suggestion. Maybe we can talk about it during the retreat. Things are happening quickly, and we don't know what's going to happen in January. But I think we have to have a council discussion about maybe preparation as a city for the needs, possible needs in the future. Thumbs up? Yeah?
Counselor Kimmy, I think the conversation is super important. I don't know what, Counselor Hassan, to your point, like what the agenda's looking like yet. And so I don't know if there's time at council retreat. So I'm also open to it happening at a separate conversation, just like, you know, knowing. I think it does fit into that conversation, but I think we have a lot we're trying to get done in that time. And so if it were maybe soon after, you know, as a work session on a council meeting or whatever, I'm in support of that as well, so that we can still stay timely and make sure we get everything done that we need to get done during the retreat.
I would just, like, this is my fourth retreat. Super excited here for it. Haven't seen the agenda. Once we do see it, if there are places that there is space or that we can revise, I don't, again, I haven't, you know, we don't know what it looks like. I just want to put that on your radar because if it's an hour of something different that we feel that we, if we feel that comfortable, I do think we owe it to boards and commissions, but I support if that's, if those two days are not going to be possible.
So, you know, I would suggest that we try to work it into the retreat. If not, maybe future work session or conversation. Is that possible, city manager?
I believe there are still conversations that are being had with counselors. So I do have an upcoming meeting with the consultants, so I can go ahead and speak with them about the agenda. I do want to kind of piggyback on Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg's comment. We call the council gave direction as a result of that assessment. So there's a little bit of confusion here about unwinding some of the direction. And so that may be best at a future work session if that is the majority of the council. So it's a little bit more to unpack. That could take a little bit of time. So we might want to think about what the best venue is for that.
That's fine. I, one thing that had come up was because of the pause, how many people were coming back. And so there was just some confusion as to who was coming back and how many, how big somebody.
I can talk to you offline about that because you will be getting your appointment packet soon, and it is a very small number.
Okay. Yeah, that was kind of the flag that some of us had seen. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? No? Okay, go to bed. I'm going to conclude our meeting for tonight.
All right.
Bye.